Six o'clock. Good evening, community. We are getting ready to start our meeting. If you can all have your seats. We have a relatively long night, but not too long. So let's get together and get it done. Okay. Call us back to session. Roll call, please. No roll call? I do that every time. My bad. Sorry. Um, any... No, no, no. Nope, nope. Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Will you please have our broadcast statement read, 4.2?
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Saturday, May 18th at 1:00 p.m. and Monday, May 20th at 12:00 p.m. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker forum, which are located in the back of the room, and give them to our communications representative, along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you. And item 4.3 is our stellar students. Introduced by me. Come on up, LDV. Good evening. Okay. I have a lot to read and it's really important. So I want you guys all to listen up. But when I say your name, wave your hands so we all know who you are, okay? Alrighty. So our stellar students this evening. The Leonardo da Vinci Schools Odyssey of the Mind team is six 4th graders led by two amazing coaches who have been working since September to compete and advance from regionals to NorCal State competition and now on to the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals. Odyssey of the Mind teaches students how to develop and use their natural creativity to become out-of-the-box problem solvers. Odyssey of the Mind brings the classroom to life as students apply what they learn and combine it with their own interests and passions to solve unique, open-ended problems. Odyssey of the Mind also emphasizes teamwork, budgeting, time management, public speaking, and much more. Working together, the team chose Problem Three, the classics, and created a performance for this year's theme opening night antics. They wrote there on script, built the props and costumes, and met every Thursday? All right. After school for hours to perfect their performance and practice for the spontaneous portion of the competition. The LDV Odyssey of the Mind team was only... Sorry. Was one of only two Sacramento schools to compete at the regional tournament in February, where they placed second and moved on to the NorCal State Tournament. The team was excited to place first for their problem and division at the state tournament in March. The team will be leaving next week to Iowa. They are excited to compete and to meet Odyssey of the Mind teams from across the United States and around the world during their time in Iowa. The Leonardo da Vinci Odyssey of the Mind team is led by their amazing coaches, Julia Wilsey and Allison Y. Garcia. Wave your hands. You're important people. That's not you? Oh, okay. Wave your hands for them. They're busy. And then these folks have volunteered many hours, guided the team with patience and wisdom. And our team members are... Remember, if I say your name, wave your hands. Althea Harry.
Not here.
Okay. Ben Wunsch.
Not here.
Jacob Wilsey.
Not here.
Natalie Alteri. Hi, Natalie. Quinn Holkbor.
Holkbor.
Holkbor. Okay. And Ms. Virginia Ruger. Hi. Okay. So Althea Harry is a 4th grade student at Leonardo da Vinci and in her third year doing Odyssey of the Mind. She enjoyed using her creativity to build props. Althea likes applying her theater skills into Odyssey of the Mind problems. And in her free time, she likes to do musicals, swim, read graphic novels, and be funny with her friends. Ben Wunsch is currently a 4th grader in Mr. Moore's class. Ben's first experience with Odyssey of the Mind was during his kindergarten year at LDV. Ben loves to play soccer and basketball, and he has golf in his sights. Ben also enjoys writing anything with wheels and listening to music. Jacob Wilsey is a 10-year-old student at LDV and has done Odyssey of the Mind in kindergarten, 3rd, and 4th grades. Jacob enjoys soccer and his pets, a dog and a snake. He enjoys the Odyssey of the Mind spontaneous challenges, especially when he gets to use his building skills. Ms. Alteri is a 4th grade student at LDV and in her second year in Odyssey of the Mind. Natalie enjoys writing and... Enjoyed writing and seeing the script come to life for this year's performance. Solving the Odyssey of the Mind spontaneous problems has been a way to exercise her creativity and problem-solving skills. In addition to Odyssey of the Mind, Natalie loves playing piano and soccer, reading books, and beating her family in a variety of board games. Top game, Monopoly? No, what is it?
It's one.
Okay. I like... I like "sorry." You can yell during that game. Sorry. Ms. Holkbor is a 4th grader at LDV, and this is her first year in Odyssey of the Mind. Quinn has loved the opportunity to creatively solve problems as a team, create sets and props by hand, and see her team's ideas come to life. In her free time, Quinn loves designing in Canva skills, playing with her dogs, and making and editing videos with friends. Last but not least, Ms. Ruger is a 4th grade student in Ms. Flores's class at LDV, and this is her second year on the LDV team. In addition to school and Odyssey of the Mind, Virginia plays competitive soccer, is active in her Girl Scout troop, and just learned how to play flute this year for the school band. Congratulations. You guys are awesome. So, um, if either or any of you three have something you want to share at this mic this evening, we'd love to hear you.
I'd love to thank my coaches, even though they're not here right now, because they have done so much to make this group and this project reality.
We would like to thank our families for over... Helping us overcome the challenges that we had to face during this year and helped us move all the way up to go into the World Finals.
I'd like to thank our team for helping us, um, solve all the problems to get to Iowa and, um, to help us make a better team. And, yeah.
Thank you. Because teamwork makes a dream work. Okay. So we have some wonderful certificates to hand out to you, but we're going to come down. I'm going to give you your certificates, and we're going to take a photo. To mom and dads and everybody, to get their cameras.
Why weren't you guys... Janine?
Look at him, too. Thanks, John. Congratulations.
I should keep up my wool jacket.
And then we have one, let me see, from Althea? Oh, I'll take that for her. You guys going to bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay. I had them in order, but I... Mr. Wilsey. Ms. Quinn. Ms. Virginia. Girls, do you want... Do you want me to help? I could do this right here. And then Natalie? Me and Natalie right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then Quinny, come over there. How's that? Does that look good?
Yes.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right. Next up, item 5.0. Announcement of action taken in closed session. Madam Counsel.
Good evening, President Phillips. There is one announcement coming out of closed session. The board approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of 6 to 0 with Member Pritchett absent. That is all.
Thank you. Up next, item 6.0, agenda adoption. Are we good with this? Somehow I feel we need to be firsting and seconding and, um... There's one move from... Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Student preferential vote, please. Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. President Phillips works a really, really, really hard, busy job, and I come here and my brain doesn't work anymore. So, it's all right. So we're moving on to, uh, public comment. Item 7.0. Tonight, we have a kind of a long night, so I'm just asking that comments be limited to two minutes with no more than 15 minutes per single topic. So if you're coming up to speak, please honor everyone's time. So if that tiki timer says two and it ticks down to zero, um, please try to wrap it up. Moving on. 8.0, communications. I'm hollering out for our employee... Did I forget something? Sorry. Present, public comment. I read all that and just...
Well, you were going to make it a very fast public comment tonight.
I was, and it's not going to be. So all of you, my bad. Let's go.
All right. First speaker tonight is Jason Daniel, followed by Justine Chu Griffith and John Myers.
Floor's yours, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I came in a couple of weeks ago. I said I would come back. And so basically, it was over. The proficiency rate and the pass rate are vastly different. And honestly, what it comes down to is it comes down to an engineering and kind of an economic issue. And what I mean by engineering is, I handed you a paper, and on the top of the paper, it says, "Susie's 13 and in the orange book." Because that's actually how we classify students. They're either by age or by grade, and it has nothing to do with where they're actually at and what their ability is. So the problem that happens is when we start testing in the 3rd grade, they end up being behind, but we have no way to actually... One, we should have known more and been able to pass more information on. And instead of acting as a single cell, so let's say you have, uh, go 1st grade, 2nd grade, 3rd grade, but there's that in-between gap. And the in-between gap is very, very important. And so if you can engineer a way so that you can pass on information... Now, the other two papers that you have, that's a final that I gave. I designed a class for, uh, my cousin, for her 4th graders. And the questions themselves are immaterial. What's important is each of those questions actually represents what we covered so that I could pass this information on to the next teacher and say, hey, this is what we know. And that is the engineering part. Engineering that flow that goes all the way through, because all of the textbooks are very encapsulated. They have a beginning and an end, but the beginning of one section doesn't match up with the end. They often have too many lessons. You have like 350 lessons to go through. Well, how do you put that together? And that's the difficult part. But if you ever have any questions on this, I would like to type longer. I just came down. I drive. It's a three-hour round trip for me to make it here. So I'm trying to wrap it up, and there's my time. And I appreciate you guys. And I left my, uh, name and number on there, and hopefully I'll be in touch.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Ms. Chu. All yours.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Justine Chu Griffith, and I'm a current 10th grader at West Campus High School. I'm here speaking to you today because I am concerned about the lack of resources and attention given to special education programs across the district. My younger brother is in the special ed program at Rosa Parks, and despite the hard work from the staff there, his experience in the past year has been unacceptable. His IEP mandates that he has a one-on-one aide. However, he did not have a stable aide for the majority of the school year. Every day was a gamble of who would show up, if anyone at all showed up. This led to a lack of academic progress and frustration. If I did not have a stable teacher for the entire school year, it would be a number-one priority at my school site to get me a teacher. However, when the same is essentially true for my brother, nothing is done without strong parent intervention. My parents, on multiple occasions, have had to stay with my brother at school just so he can have a fulfilling day of learning. However, many parents don't have this ability, and the burden should not be on parents to become teachers. At the same time, special ed classrooms are set up so students get very little interaction with students outside of their classes. This leads to negativity and division across school sites. I've witnessed students using terms like sped or the R slur as insults daily on my own campus. I believe this is a direct result of the lack of interaction between special ed and general ed students. Finally, I am concerned about the lack of 504 support in the district. Many of my friends have struggled to get access to 504s. And even when they do, they struggle to get staff to actually comply. Because of this, I strongly urge the board to pay more attention to the treatment that students with disabilities receive within SCUSD. Families with special education students already have a lot on their plates. And the last thing they should have to worry about is the 6 to 7 hours that their students attend school every day. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Good evening, trustees. I'm speaking here tonight as a parent, both to a current and also a former student in the William Land Elementary Mandarin Immersion Program. I can't speak highly enough of this program that both satisfies a cultural need of so many in the region as well as, um, positioning students for a language, which will be a core part of the global 21st century. This program also draws students to SAC... SCUSD from across the region, which I think is something that we want, right? With, uh, you know, decreasing enrollments. These students typically are strong academic performers, and they go on to Mewoc Middle School. And they... And for high school, they usually go to West Campus, sometimes McClatchy. 13 years ago, the very first class of kindergarteners sat down to learn Mandarin with Mrs. Go at William Land. It was pretty cute, I bet, too, right? Next month, these same students will be the first MIP students to graduate high school. So 13 years have passed, and there hasn't been a real pathway for them to continue learning. We are asking for a pathway for our students to continue learning Mandarin through middle school and through high school. Because where the students are at, we recommend, uh, Mewoc Middle School and West Campus. And that those schools are supportive of that as well. Parents and community... And the community funded a zero-period Mandarin class two years ago at Mewoc, and it was very successful, although the parents couldn't sustain the funding. In the coming weeks, you'll see a lot of Mandarin language supporters here at this podium and in your inbox. Hopefully, you know, we can respond to these folks' needs. Trustee Rhodes, I think, two years ago or one year ago, we met and we discussed having a language plan. I think we really need to dust that off and see if we can really find a way to support these language learners. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next group of speakers, Maggie Kemper, followed by Uriah Derlantis and Katie Elson.
All yours.
Okay. Hello. My name is Maggie Kemper. I'm a 10th grader, and I go to the School of Engineering and Sciences. I'm actually up here to address the recent surge of student exposure to substances like vaping and drinking and actually weed in the bathrooms. So while every day, students are getting hooked onto new substances at my school, the only measure I've seen taken is suspension. And I think suspension is one of the last measures that should be taken. Suspension is just a short-term solution. It never helps a student, and suspension can actually send them home where the problem can be occurring. Suspensions have also been found to disproportionately affect Black and Brown students. So, um, I think new and healthier environments should be established, and we need to help, like... We need to help the youth, all in all. We need to help the youth fight addiction and prevent them from being exploited so they can flourish not only inside of schools but also outside of schools. All in all, I encourage the board to bring attention and start focusing on giving the students the guidance they need to support the students who don't even know they have an addiction right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Derlantis. All yours.
Good evening, Board President Phillips, Board Members, Superintendent Allen and SCUSD staff. My name is Uriah Derlantis, and I am a former graduate of Sacramento Charter High School as well as the discontinued Oak Park Preparatory Academy. I've also worked for three years at the bookstore at Underground Books, and I'm currently working over two years for Fixton Soul Kitchen, both of which are under the umbrella of St. Hope. I am a recent graduate from USC, earning a bachelor's in Health and Human Sciences. I am confident that this would not be possible if it weren't for St. Hope Public Schools providing me with the educational support that I needed to be able to endure all four years... Sorry. All four years of my college career. St. Hope Public Schools helped develop my love for education as well as my desire to learn new things. When I graduated from SAC High, I was academically prepared for college-level work, and I developed the life skills I needed to succeed living on my own. The school's emphasis on college success put me in a trajectory to not only do well academically, but to get involved in campus life and make the most of my college experience. All while having a job as a full-time student, I managed to complete a certificate program on the fundamentals of data science offered by Stanford Medicine, participate in the Club for Christian Women's Fellowship and Outreach, make the dean's list at USC multiple times, and graduate with a 3.31 GPA. Simply put, a building is only as strong as its foundation. St. Hope Public Schools was my foundation from which I built my college career upon. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Elson. Floor's yours.
Good evening, Board President Phillips, Board Members, Superintendent Allen and SCUSD staff. My name is Tamara Doty, and I've worked at SAC High for the past five years as a teaching assistant and as a science teacher. I'm going to speak to you this evening about college readiness at SAC High. I'm proud that we are one of two high schools in SCUSD to offer Panther Pipeline, a dual enrollment program with SAC City College. We're the only school to offer this in person. We want our scholars to be confident in their abilities to set goals and make it through college. And we also pay for these scholars in the Panther Pipeline to receive books and supplies to help them with their college classes. In addition to Panther Pipeline, we also have an ongoing partnership with UC Davis, Department of Biochemistry and Molecular Medicine. This is the third year that we've had researchers and professors from UC Davis come and speak to our science students. Just two weeks ago, Dr. Megan Dennis, an associate professor and researcher from UC Davis, brought her lab members to SAC High to lead a hands-on DNA workshop with all of our juniors in their integrated science classes. As part of our collaboration with UC Davis, SAC High students were offered an opportunity to apply for an eight-week paid summer internship. We're excited that eight SAC High scholars will gain hands-on experience in world-class UC Davis research labs this summer. Not only will they learn technical skills used in research labs, but they'll be exposed to science subjects such as nanomedicine, epigenetics, and cancer research. This experience will help prepare our scholars for college and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doty.
Good evening, Board Members and staff. My name's Canora Allen, and the college I'll be attending is SAC State. I am grateful for all the support from the staffs and teachers from SAC High, and I can't wait to graduate and go to college and continue my future.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Board President. My name is Desiree Crocker. I'm a senior at SAC High. I'm about to graduate in a few weeks. I'm grateful to... For the support my teachers have given me throughout the years and provide me with all the knowledge along the way. Today was signing day, and I was committing to SAC State, and I cannot wait to start my new journey there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desiree.
Good evening, Board Members. I hope everyone is doing well. My name is Deja Crocker, and I attend Sacramento Charter High School, where I was a part of our school senate as a culture coordinator leader. Today, at our senior class signing day, I committed to attend UC Merced to major in mechanical engineering. I am very appreciative for all of our... For all of the support I was given from my teachers, family, and friends on my high school journey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members and staff. My name is Melvin Heywood. I'm here on... I am a graduating senior of the class of 2024 at Sacramento Charter High School, and I'm here on behalf of St. Hope. Today, I'd like to give St. Hope a big thank you for all the support that I've received towards my commitment as a college senior. Being a part of St. Hope has given me more than enough opportunities than what I could possibly ask for. During my senior year, I was offered a job at Underground Books, During my senior year, I was offered a job at Underground Books, which is owned by St. Hope Schools and we, at St. Hope, we called each other a family. During this time at St. Hope, I had many teachers that I'd like to thank because I had many opportunities with them, not to not only call them my teacher but also my mentor. During this year, during my senior year at Sacramento Charter High School, I have taken college courses that gave me college credits for college during my high school year. Choosing a college is very difficult for me and also any senior because this is the next step into our, our real world. I'd like to thank SAC high because as I struggled this year in making a college choice, they have provided me, provided me with many resources that I, that I couldn't have possibly asked for. Because of the amazing support from St. Hope, today I have committed to California State University Long Beach and I'd like to say thank you once again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Justice Spears, a senior at SAC high. Thank you all for hearing from me today. I committed to SAC State and I plan to major in Criminal Justice there or transferring. I can't wait to start my college journey. I have experienced many ups and downs during my four years at SAC high, but overall, I will forever love my school and graduating class. SAC high set me up for success with the Panther Pipeline program Ms. Doty mentioned, a dual enrollment program that brings our professors to school. It gave me firsthand experience on how college is going to go and what steps I need to take to ensure I finish my college years strong and exemplify the SAC high mission I signed today at my senior signing ceremony. The Panther Pipeline is a great opportunity that any scholar should take. I try to caution incoming SAC high dragons to take every opportunity that is given to them as it truly makes a difference. Another favorite opportunity that SAC high did was the HBCU fair that expanded my college acceptances and dreams. Though I chose to stay close to home, I at least know my options and have a choice in the matter. During the fair, I was able to showcase and grow my communication and public speaking skills. I was granted the privilege to speak on the news, sharing my acceptances and how important and impactful, impactful an HBCU fair is to me. I thank any person, mentor, teacher, coworker, or community member who has added to me or my school to better our education. I will go far. Thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Ms. Justice.
Good evening, Sacramento School District President and Board Members. My name is Yimari Morris. I'm currently a ninth grader at Sacramento Charter High School. I am excited to be a part of St. Hope and all the opportunities that it's shown me. Recently, I participated in a program where I learned about the housing industry and what it entails to bring an affordable housing project to fruition. We learned from a professional architect and were able to complete the interior and exterior painting of an affordable housing development right here in downtown Sacramento. In addition to assisting with building affordable housing, I have attended several jobs and hands-on career fairs. These hands-on opportunities were really rewarding and I appreciate St. Hope exposing me to the different industries and cornerfields. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Marquee Marcellus and I am a student recruiter at Sacramento Charter High School. At St. Hope, we work to provide our scholars with a wide range of learning opportunities beyond the traditional classroom, including enrichment programs, internships, partnerships with businesses, and colleges. And that is one of my favorite things to do. One of the things that I did this year is partnering with US Bank, bringing financial literacy to our students because it's highly important and also connecting that to the learning environment. And I'd also like to add, although I went to West Campus High School, all of my friends went to SAC high and I'm happy to report that they are flourishing in top executive positions in their adult life right now. Each year, SAC high hosts a college fair with historically Black colleges and universities. This year, there were over thirty HBCUs in attendance and scholars received over one hundred and ten college acceptances and four scholars received a full, full-ride scholarships, including one that is going off to Howard University where I went. So I just like to add that too. Last month, SAC high hosted a career fair to connect our high school scholars with representatives from different agencies, businesses, and colleges. Over a hundred students participated in the event where they networked with professionals, including representatives from the US Air Force, Sacramento Fire Department, and UC Davis School of Medicine. This event is an important part of our school's focus on exposing scholars to different career fields and industries. And I'd like to add to that because the students went in just wanting a free dress day, right? They're like, oh, we don't have to wear a uniform, great, but they came out with so many ideas. I want to try this. I didn't even know this was even possible and it was because of the forward-thinking that we have at SAC high Charter High School. Thank you so much for listening and I hope you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Marcellus.
Good evening, Sacramento, good evening, President Sacramento Unified School District, Superintendent, and Board Members. My name's Yimaya Morris and I am a senior at Sacramento Charter High School and I am honored to speak for you today. Today, I have committed to Northern Arizona University where I plan to major in psychology and become a therapist for adolescents. From my many years at St. Hope, I, I am truly grateful for all the support I have received along the way. The admin have built many meaningful relationships with many of the students and have advocated many times over and over again to help their students succeed. SAC high has given me many other, me and many other students access to help our future by allowing us to be dual enrollment students and at Sacramento City College. This has taught me what it means to be a college student by staying organized and disciplined. If it were not for St. Hope, I would not have feel, I would not feel as prepared as I am today to start my college journey.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Brad Bernstein and I am the ninth-grade humanities teacher as well as the media club facilitator at St. Hope SAC high. I started last year as a substitute and joined the staff in a full-time capacity this year. I wanted to speak to you this evening about my experiences at St. Hope, specifically with regard to safety and security. I have witnessed firsthand several improvements made on campus since I began last year. These improvements include the implementation of a safety application as well as notification system catapult. In addition, the installation of new security cameras throughout the facility, both inside and out. Additionally, I've seen improvements made on both the interior and exterior locking mechanisms, including doors and gates. In conclusion, I would like to state that I have never felt unsafe at any SAC high event or on campus at any time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
Good evening, Board President Phillips, Board Members, Superintendent Allen, and S.C. USD staff. My name is Katie Elson and I am the ninth-grade music teacher at St. Hope Sacramento Charter High School. This is my first year at SAC high and I look forward to continuing a wonderful career with St., with St. Hope, serving the SAC high community. I'm coming to you tonight to speak on my experience with safety and support at St. Hope. As a new teacher, I have felt warmly supported in and out of the classroom. Administration has been present and communicating and consistently checking in with me one-on-one, providing necessary resources and making sure I am equipped to succeed. I am particularly appreciative of the dean team who have made themselves readily available to support behavioral management and promote a culture of high behavior expectations to keep our school community safe. Safety is paramount at SAC high with new systems in place to vet visitors, monitor campus via cameras, and communicate school-wide amongst staff. I feel both safe and supported at SAC high. I'm proud to be part of the Dragon community and look forward to growing in my teaching practice here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Board Members, President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, and S.C. USD staff members. I'm Amelia Love here on behalf of Sacramento High School as a graduating senior. I wholeheartedly believe that without SAC high's rigorous dual enrollment courses and interactive staff, I wouldn't have gotten the support I needed. Their dedication to hard work and commitment created a strong foundation to uplift and motivate their students to set an example for generations behind them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love.
Good evening, Sacramento City School District President, Superintendent, Board Members and Staff. My name is Alicia Morris and I am a current, past, and future parent of St. Hope. I came to St. Hope looking for the best education for my five children and my goddaughter, who I raised. What drew me to St. Hope is their graduation requirements that align with our college acceptance requirements. When I first came to St. Hope, I had three, I had children at all three campuses, the elementary, middle, and high school. I put my trust in this school and fell in love with the culture and the curriculum that prepared my children for college. Upon the thousands and thousands of volunteer hours that I have done since 2011, I have seen firsthand how being at St. Hope has changed the lives of many families for the better. To see children at such a young age talk about going to college and what they want to be, and what they plan to be when they grow up. St. Hope holds multiple, holds multiple family events, learning workshops, and sports events that happen on our campus to bring our community together. I can currently name four positive things that has happened in my household alone. One, Sylvia Autumn Moore graduated SAC high 2014, accepted to Hampton, and graduated with a major in business and a minor in leadership four years later in 2018.
We did that!
Ronald Thompson graduated SAC high 2017, accepted to UCLA where he graduated with a major in environmental science for four years later in 2021 and working in this field in a degree in Boston.
We did that!
Terrell Thompson graduated SAC high this past Saturday, I'm sorry, graduated SAC high in 2020, accepted to UC Berkeley and graduated this past Saturday at UC Berkeley with a major in business and will be starting a new job in San Francisco with a great salary.
We did that!
Yimaya Morris, graduating June 4th and will be attending Northern Arizona University, majoring in child psychology.
We did that!
To have this much success, it takes a community, which is why we are saying today, we did that. Now, I don't know a community that is perfect. I don't know a perfect restaurant. I don't know a perfect store, but I have faith and confidence in this current leadership that each day, they are striving for excellence amongst our children and community. And, and as this world and education system evolve, they too will continue to meet the needs and not only of my children but all that attends St. Hope. And with that, we will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more public comment.
Thanks. Eight point zero communications calling y'all now. SETA?
Good evening, Board President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, and members of the board. It is really amazing that we are here now nearing the end of a whole school year under new leadership. Things are moving along better and more collaboratively and in a much more transparent way that's open to input and discussion and that's leading to much better outcomes for our system and for our students. Community schools are off the ground with a district-wide committee and dedicated teacher leader at the district level and we are now poised to hire site-based teacher leaders that will be able to get the work at the sites going for next year. We have additional art and music positions that should be posted soon. The payroll process is improving and they are piloting a new streamlined process for approvals that I think is going to help a lot of, a lot of angst and issues that have been going on for quite a while. The MTSS design team has been meeting regularly and working towards a model that will actually provide tier-two and tier-three interventions for all our students throughout the district. We are working collaboratively to design professional learning days before the school year starts and to build a long-term plan that values teacher input and considers where we are, where we want to be, and making a plan for how we're going to get there. We've seen huge improvements in the staffing process with the changes that we worked out in our negotiations this fall that really sped up the hiring and surplus process. We had a very nice surplus fair and process where teachers and principals were able to meet each other and ask questions before selecting their sites. We have a pool of open contract teachers that we are excited to be placing through a surplus fair process hopefully in early June. And wouldn't it be amazing if we were fully staffed for next school year? I think it would be the closest we've been in a really long time. So thank you for all your hard work and I know we're all going to have a late night tonight, but we have some great people to honor today. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, SEIU. Moving up and on, eight point two, District Advisory Community, Community Student Advisory Council. Ah, familiar faces.
We are putting our final touches on our board resolutions and we have been working in collaboration with the following departments, facilities, nutrition, nutrition services, and student support health services. We are also working to create our final year report for the board.
What I said at the last meeting was incorrect. We will be presenting our Sustainable Waste and Final Year Report on the sixth. We are also hoping to present our Gender Neutral Initiative on the sixth, as well as our campus hygiene initiative on the twentieth. And it's still not late to come to one of our, it's still not too late to come to one of our meetings. Please come to one of our meetings. We will have one on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week and on Wednesday of the following week. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Community Advisory Committee, CAC. D-LAC, English Learner Advisory Committee. LCAP, Local Control Accountability. Community Schools Advisory Committee. There you go. Good evening. Floor is yours.
Good evening. Missed you last, missed you last board meeting. So, good evening, Superintendent Allen, Board President, and Board Members. So, so the CSAC, we had our last meeting for the year last night and we made a couple of decisions. One, next year, we'll be meeting once a month. We don't need to meet twice a month anymore now that we kind of got going and got rolling. It'll be, the first meeting will be on August 28th and then after that, it'll be the second Wednesday of every month and all meetings will be here at CERNa. That's the plan. Since we've last met, the CSAC has, or since I've last talked, the CSAC has been trained by SCOWE's new Director of Community Schools, Nadia Purewal. She also trained, the, had a training with the eighteen community school principals. And there, SCOWE is also sponsoring a training, a two-day training on June 6th, no, June 10th and 11th. That is free and I invite all of you to sign up. Anybody can go. It's open to anybody in Sacramento's interested in community schools. So encourage Board Members, if you can attend, to go ahead and sign up for that training. Again, it's June 10th and 11th. It's the Monday and Tuesday. I cannot go because I will be giving finals, but otherwise, I would love to. Good news, the site, community schools positions, those eighteen should post hopefully tomorrow. And then I want to give the rest of my time to introduce our new district community schools' training specialist, Sarah Lynn.
Hi. Thank you. I feel very honored to be a part of this community schools team. My goal is to bring my enthusiasm, passion, and leadership to make S.C. USD a national community schools model. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, American Indian Education Program Parent Committee. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, President Phillips, Members of the board, Superintendent Adams, and S.C. USD staff. My name is Danielle Black and I'm a member of the Citizen Potawatomi Nation. My Potawatomi name is Wabanosque, which translates to bright star woman. I have a ninth-grade student at McClatchy High School where I am also a graduate from and I'm here to provide the update for the American Indian Education Program Parent Committee. Since our last update, the parent committee has been meeting to discuss issues regarding accessibilities to opportunities for our students, the ability to connect with and hire vendors for programs and events, providing recommendations for programming for the 2024, 2025 school year, planning for the annual American Indian Education Program Promotion and Graduation Ceremony, as well as the S.C. USD American Indian Education Summer Program. Throughout this year, we have run into some barriers in our attempts to provide our students with opportunities to attend events or to bring speakers and cultural educators in to work with them, as well as not being able to support local native and women-owned businesses as vendors due to timelines, insurance, and additional requirements. We understand that these parameters are put into place to ensure compliance with local state and federal laws and to protect the district from liability issues. But prior to the start of the next school year, we would like an opportunity to connect with someone in the district office to review district policies and practices to determine if there are ways to mitigate the barriers that are limiting opportunities for our students and for our ability to support local vendors. On a more positive note, during our April parent committee meeting, students and families were invited to participate in a pottery class hosted by Alex Russell, who serves on our parent committee. The class was well-received and provided an opportunity for families to connect together. On May 6th, the American Indian Education Program Public Hearing was held to gather recommendations for the 2024-2025 Title VI Indian Education Formula Grant Application. Based on the data provided regarding attendance and ELA scores, recommendations included surveying native parents to identify the issues related to attendance and finding ways to make writing more fun. One specific recommendation was to partner with the 916, Inc. organization, which we've worked with before, where students were able to write stories and poems that were then bound into books. The parent committee is thrilled to report that we received a generous donation from both Board Member Rhodes and the Wilton Rancheria Tribal Leadership to support our annual American Indian Education Program Promotion and Graduation Celebration for our promoting kindergarteners, sixth grade, eighth grade, as well as graduating seniors. That will be here on May 30th from 6:30 to 8:30 and we look forward to as many board members as possible attending. Finally, we're excited to continue work on our summer program, which is a five-day program for our second through sixth grade students from June 17th through July 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to special presentations. Nine point one, Middle School Mathletes Awards and Recognition. Ms. Craig, it's all yours.
Hello. Hello. My name is Suzy Craig. I'm the mathematics coordinator for the district and I have had the pleasure of facilitating our middle school mathletes competitions this year. And I'm here to share a little bit about our competitions and what we've done this year and also present some student awards. We invite all of our middle schools to engage in this experience, which starts with a math teacher onsite deciding to take on the role of mathletes coach and then trying to entice students to join the team. Coaches then begin to hold weekly practices where they review tests and practice problems. They prepare their students for upcoming competitions. This year, our mathletes teams are from Albert Einstein Middle School, Genevieve Didion K8, Leonardo da Vinci K8, Mewoc Middle School, Sam Brandon Middle School, and Will Seawood Middle School. So I'll start by telling you a little bit about our mathletes competitions. This year, we hosted six competitions here at the CERNa Center in these rooms. All the competitions began the same way. Students would sit with their team and their coach to finalize who's taking each test. They eat the snacks that one of the school has graciously provided. I present the rules to the whole group. They socialize a bit and then we begin with the test-taking. Every competition consists of four topic tests that students work on individually and one group test where teammates work together to solve a problem. The topic test categories are always the same. The categories are in one, number sense, two, expressions and equations, three, data analysis, statistics, and probability, and four, geometry. We score all of their tests right then and each school's team score from that competition is made up of all the individuals' scores on each topic test. At each competition, we award first, second, and third place to school teams, as well as perfect score ribbons for students who earned perfect scores on two or more tests. To give you some examples of the kinds of questions that students are given, here are a few. So from the number sense test, for, for example, we asked, "A dollar was changed into sixteen coins consisting of just nickels and dimes. How many coins of each kind were in the change?" From the expressions and equations test, we asked, "If one-third y is less than negative two, what is the largest integer that y can be?" And from the geometry test, we asked, "A fourteen-foot tall building and a twenty-foot tall building..." And from the geometry test, we asked, "A 14-foot tall building and a 20-foot tall building are 8 feet apart. What is the shortest distance between the top edges of the buildings?" So it's a really fun and interesting puzzle for me and my colleagues to try and select questions that we think are challenging, yet also doable for our middle school students. And then it's always rewarding to see the students' problems solve their way to an answer and be excited about math. We had parent volunteers at each competition who scored the tests, and they can attest that we were really strict about awarding points. Questions were scored as all or nothing. There were not opportunities for partial credit, and certain answers must include their units, like feet, or square inches, or dollars, or else it was marked as incorrect. And I will say, it is painful to give a student zero points when they write 5 instead of $5. However, I will also say that by the final competition, they were all writing their units. So it was a really fun year, several close competitions between teams. There was one time when we realized our answer key was wrong because we kept getting so many of the same answer turned in, and we can always count on our students to tell us when we're making mistakes. So we love that. Our mathletes coaches worked really hard to build their teams, to equitably assign students to tests, to practice on a regular basis. They worked really hard to bring their students to the competitions each month and then to keep them on track while they were here. So before we get to our awards, I want to give a quick shout-out to our mathletes coaches from each school. They're all math teachers at their respective sites, and I feel really grateful that they made it a priority to have a mathletes team on their campus. So they are Holly Cassavich from Albert Einstein, Leanne Fasioto from Genevieve Didion, Robert Walters and Dave Celeste from LDV, Lonnie Martin from Mewoc, Pam Phillips from Sam Brandon, and Jennifer Grazer from Willseywood. So that brings us to our awards time. So our awards tonight are Amazon gift cards. They are donated from Sac State as part of the Steinberg Memorial Scholarship Fund. So I'm gonna begin by presenting the awards for our top scorers from each school. These individual students scored the most points for their school on individual topic tests. They're each gonna receive a $100 Amazon gift card. So when I call your name, you can come up and accept your award. From Albert Einstein Middle School, Trey Shelby. From Genevieve Didion, Julia Parr. From Willseywood, Nicole Lee. From LDV, Emmett Weiner. From Sam Brandon, Jax Little. And from Mewoc Middle School, Julia Song. Our next two awards are presented to the seventh grader with the highest overall score and the eighth grader with the highest overall score out of all of our mathletes throughout the course of the year. They will each receive a $200 Amazon gift card. We have our top-scoring seventh grader out of all of our mathletes from Mewoc Middle And our top-scoring eighth grader out of all of our mathletes is from Willseywood, Nicole Okay, so finally, we have our school awards for first, second, and third place overall for the course of the year. So I'll ask the coaches to come up to accept the plaque, but students from that school may come up as well. So in third place, coached by Jennifer Grazer, is Willseywood Middle School. And in first place, coached by Lonnie Martin, Mewoc Middle School. Thank you, Board members, Superintendent Allen, for listening, for recognizing our students, our schools, our teachers, and thank you for all our families who came out to celebrate tonight. Thank you, Ms. Craig.
Can we have everyone who just got an award to come back up so we can take a giant photo?
I love that. Thank you.
For everybody. Everybody.
I'll be giving my second one right here.
I want one more.
I'm sure.
There we go.
I want a small one.
I want one there at the front.
I'm sure.
You guys just squeeze.
I'm sure.
There we go.
I like the parents.
Yes.
All right.
I'm ready.
I'm shutting my business.
Thank you, y'all.
Get in here. We got two more. Get in here.
Perfect.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. Simmons.
That's really cool. All right. Item 9.2, 2024-2025 Classified Champions, Dr. Tiffany Smith-Simmons. Floor is all yours.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Tiffany Smith-Simmons, and tonight's presentation is one of my favorite presentations of the year. We are here to acknowledge our classified champions of the year. And I want to just take a moment to recognize a group of individuals whose dedication and hard work often go unnoticed, but whose contributions are absolutely vital to the smooth running of our school district. I'm speaking about our non-teacher staff members. To our staff who support the offices at our sites and departments, whose attention to detail ensures that the school operates seamlessly, your efforts in managing schedules, keeping records, and supporting both staff and students are the backbone of our institution. To our custodians and maintenance crew, thank you for creating a clean and safe environment for everyone. Your work often begins before the first bell rings and continues long after the last bell of the day, ensuring every corner of our school is a safe place we can be proud of. To our nutrition services staff, your dedication in providing nutritious meals is appreciated more than words can express. Your contribution to the health and well-being of our students makes sure that they have the energy to learn and grow. To our support staff, including aides, bus drivers, and security personnel, your roles are critical in maintaining a supportive and secure environment for our students. Your commitment to their safety and well-being is invaluable. In every role, your hard work and commitment make a significant difference in the lives of our students and overall success of our school district. Today, we celebrate nearly 50 classified champions with the collective years of service to our district of 850 years, ranging from 33 years to seven years of dedicated service. We offer our heartfelt thanks for all you do. Tonight, we have certificates and apples to show your appreciation, and after the Teacher of the Year presentation, we're gonna meet you in the bistro. Oh, and we also have t-shirts. I'll talk to you about that in a moment. But we're gonna give the awards in the bistro after the Teacher of the Year announcement. I also would like to acknowledge the team members that helped make tonight possible. We have Charmaine Brown, a office manager at Oak Ridge Elementary, who served on our Classified Champion of the Year Committee, and also Jim Riffle, the Vice President of SEIU, who was a part of our planning for tomorrow's event. We are excited to honor all of our, recognize all of our employees tomorrow, May 17, 2024, the 70th anniversary of Brown versus the Board of Education, and we will have commemorative shirts for everyone that's being recognized this year. Thank you. These are the names, I'm sorry, representing our school sites and departments. So if you are here as a classified champion at the end of our Teacher of the Year presentation, please join us in the bistro to receive your apple and your commemorative shirt. Congratulations. And if you are here, can we come up to take a photo, all classified champions?
Okay, classified champions are coming down. We're gonna come up here and take a photo, every single last one of you. Let's do it. Come on, y'all. We're taking a picture, too.
Hey, and before you go get that cake and ice cream in the lounge, we want to say
a couple of things to your board members. Before you start, Dr. Simmons.
Okay. Okay, I know everyone's walking out. We didn't get to talk before we came to the picture. I just wanted to give a huge thanks to all of our classified champions and everyone in our district, whether they're here tonight or not, who does everything for our students. We see you out there every day, often on the side, but doing things that make these schools run, so thank you. And then I had a brief statement to read from Carla Fawcett, who couldn't be here tonight due to double booking. She says, "In appreciation for your commitment to your students, your chapter leaders acknowledge your dedication and commitment." Congratulations.
Ms. Jean.
I know folks are kind of on their way out, but in education, it's really easy for the focus on teachers to think of a lot of the oxygen in the room. And the truth is that us teachers cannot teach if our kids don't get safely to school that our bus drivers work so hard to do. And we can't teach if the campuses aren't safe and the kids aren't able to be on the playground or in the lunchrooms. And our staff, we greet everybody to come to the campus. And our cafeteria works so hard to make food as healthy and safe and prepared to our staff with our campuses so clean and contained. And I know that there are positions I'd like to think about right now, but the truth is, our education is for professionals, those that support and happens in the classroom. Truly, we probably hurt the livelihood of the schools. And so it's important that we take a moment to just say thank you so much to those who work so hard and frankly don't get paid enough for their ass to do. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're moving on. 9.3, 2024-25 Teacher of the Year.
Good evening again. My name is Tiffany Smith-Simmons, and I am here to announce our 2024-2025 Teacher of the Year. Standing with me are members, representatives of our committee. We always invite our former Teacher of the Year to serve on the
Hey, and before you go get that cake and ice cream in the lounge, we want to say a couple of things to your board members. Before you start, Dr. Simmons.
Okay, I know everyone's walking out. We didn't get to talk before we sent, before we came to the picture. I just wanted to give a huge thanks to all of our classified champions and everyone in our district, whether they're here tonight or not, who does everything for our students. We see you out there every day, often on the side, but doing things that make these schools run, so thank you. And then I had a brief statement to read from Carla Fawcett, who couldn't be here tonight due to double booking. She says, "In appreciation for your commitment to your students, your chapter leaders acknowledge your dedication and commitment." Congratulations.
Ms. Jean.
I know folks are kind of on their way out. But in education, it's really easy for the focus on teachers to take up a lot of the oxygen in the room. And the truth is that us teachers cannot teach if our kids don't get safely to school that our bus drivers work so hard to do. And we can't teach if the campuses aren't safe and the kids aren't able to be on the playground or in the lunch rooms. And the office staff greet everybody to come to the campus. And our cafeteria works so hard to make the food as healthy and safe and prepared to our staff, because our campus is so clean and contained. And I know that there are positions I'd like to think about right now. But the truth is, is our education is for professionals. Those that support and happens in the classroom truly help the livelihood of the schools. And so it's important we take a moment to just say thank you so much to those who work so hard and frankly don't get paid enough for their ass to do. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're moving on. 9.3, 2024-25 Teacher of the Year.
Good evening again. My name is Tiffany Smith Simmons, and I am here to announce our 2024-2025 Teacher of the Year. Standing with me are members, are representatives of our committee. We always invite our former Teacher of the Year to serve on the committee. We also invite a member of SCTA, a retiree, to serve on our committee and our academic office. So I just would like to also acknowledge our committee members. So we have Dr. Debbie Lawson, Nicole Quinn, Angela Jones, Sandy Olson, the academic office of Hillary Harrell, and Tara Lampkins. And I am proud to announce the first Teacher of the Year teacher from Rosemont.
The one other thing I would like to mention is that I am not a native Japanese speaker. I did major in Japanese. The one other thing I would like to mention is that I am not a native Japanese speaker. I did major in Japanese. I studied abroad in Japan, and I have gone back several times for training programs and through grants and things like that pertaining to my work. But I feel like it is important to note that I'm not a native Japanese speaker. I know that a lot of students are very surprised when they sign up for Japanese and they say, they say, "Miss Martinez." But I talk to them about how that really is something that lends me strength in my teaching. I, every single mistake that the students are going to make, every single frustration they have, I've lived those mistakes. I've lived the frustration.
Kelly, will you please come forward? We're going to do our second Teacher of the Year and come up for photos, but Nikki's sticking your picture. And our second Teacher of the Year is from Luther Burbank High School, social science teacher, Erin.
I am deeply connected to my community. I grew up attending schools in the SAC Unified School District, just like my sisters and my grandmother before me. And today, I'm honored to say that I still live and work in this community that I call home. As an active community member, I volunteer at the California History Museum and the Sacramento Food Bank. And my aim is to bridge the gap between resources and my community, which is a historically and presently underserved and disenfranchised community. One initiative that I'm really proud of is the Black History Month Program at Luther Burbank High School, which I spearheaded for the past five years. The program culminates with Black Family Night. Black Family Night is a celebration that works to increase parent involvement, build community, and connects our school community with local resources. I've worked to build partnerships with numerous local organizations so that we can provide students and their families with support and access to community resources. Moreover, I leverage my community involvement for professional growth, leading workshops for other teachers. And I've also been able to develop a localized ethnic studies curriculum and provide professional development around it, ensuring that curriculum reflects the diversity and the experiences of the community that we serve.
So if we can have, I don't see where Kelly went. Is Kelly still here?
She's right here.
Oh, if we can have the board say comments, and then we'll come down for pictures.
Ms. Jean. Let's let the teacher speak.
Thank you. Education today is not what it was even a few years ago. And your heart and your commitment and your passion for students is evident on your faces and in the work that you do. And I'm just so excited that we get to honor you and all that you've done for our students this year. So, thank you for all you do, and congratulations.
Ms. Segura.
I'm a current 12th grader at West Campus High School, and I genuinely don't think that I would be anywhere near where I am today without the teachers that taught me growing from as early as preschool to now. So I just want to say thank you so much for all the efforts that you put into your students to bring them up and to help them through everything. They recognize that, we recognize that, and you deserve to be here, obviously. And it's why you've been awarded this. So, thank you so much. I really appreciate you, we all do.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes.
Jim was just up here, hilarious. I just wanted to say, Ms. Leonie, we're, get to see you at Burbank and actually how much the Burbank community and in which you've built there, walk into your classroom, always, it reminds, your classroom reminds me of, like my aunt's and my mom's house type of vibe, if that makes sense. If you guys ever get to go to her classroom, you'll understand. Maybe be a very African-American thing as well. But it gets that vibe, and the students get to come in, and they take that on, too. But then also, you know, we had Ms. Jones, and now you. Area 5 is represented well by you guys. And for us to be two years in a row, it shows that South SAC Sacramento has a real ability to be a home of innovation and change for our broader community, and I appreciate that work. Obviously, you see, all the people are here to cheer you on. And that doesn't happen just because you get an award. It happens because you are vital to the community that's there on site. So we really appreciate you for that, for sure. Thank you.
Mr. Singh.
All right. Congratulations to you both. I think it's really important, something that Chinua just mentioned. I've had the opportunity to visit Burbank and Rosemont High School, and I think you all are at schools that, that need great teachers, that really have students who are willing and ready to learn, and they need teachers who are willing to give it their all. And that's why you're getting this award, because you come in every single day and provide everything that you can possibly provide. As a former language teacher myself, I understand that it's really difficult to try to get kids engaged to learn a whole different language when they're like, "Well, I got, I learned English. I'm good, I'm good to go." It's like, no, there's, there's a lot more out there, right? And at the same time, thinking about being teachers from backgrounds where students need to see kids who look like them, who come from their communities, who are dedicated. And also for you to say that you're back in the same communities that your grandmother's been at or your family's been at, Ms. Leon, that's, that's amazing, right? And Ms. Martinez, just for speaking a different language, that kids are just like, "Wait, what? You're the, you're the Japanese language teacher?" I think that's just amazing, and it goes to show, and it, it gives kids this opportunity to see that they can truly be whatever they want. And I'm hoping that some of our students do become teachers. So thank you so much for leading.
Thank you. Mr. Kayata.
Thank you for being such great representatives of your profession and of the great things that teachers do for our students here in this district every day. I know it can be really hard to achieve the excellence that you two have achieved to get to this point. You start getting something going, and then the principal changes. You start getting something going, and then policies change. You start getting something going, and then there's a wave of craziness with the kids. I know how difficult it must be to stay focused on your true mission and giving back to our community, and I appreciate it so much for you and all the other teachers in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that teachers are probably the most important people in front of our students. And I know this for a fact, because the impact that you make on our students is not only them saying, "I see myself, and I'm represented in what it is you're teaching," but also all the way down to that first grader who calls his teacher mama. Because that's what you guys do for us. So I truly appreciate everything you teachers do, and super, congratulations. Picture? Oh, we're coming down for a picture. So, let's do it. Dr. Simmons, you got to direct this.
And then anyone who has come to show support for them as well, please come take a picture with our Teachers of the Year.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yes. I am, I'm right here. Mr. Starries.
Get up here.
Classified champions, if you would meet us in the bistro.
I don't think it's on anymore. There's nothing up here.
Right.
Okay.
It's still on, but, no, I was actually just waiting for the host to pull.
Oh, okay, I thought it was, well, after Ms. Jean's mic.
Oh, okay, yeah, and it did. All right. Back to your regularly scheduled meeting, item 9.4. Yeah, it was perfect. Item 9.4, Approve Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Resolution 3413. Mr. Singh.
Thank you, President Phillips. I think you said 3413. Okay. All right, so this is to approve Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I'm just going to read through some key parts of this resolution. It's quite long. But let's just kind of start with some background. So, whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have made contributions to the history of California and the United States that include, but are not limited to, building the Transcontinental Railroad, serving in the armed forces, co-organizing the Leno Grape Strike, and advocating for civil rights. Whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have endured hardships, including unjust working conditions, prejudice, discrimination in some of the darkest times in our state and nation's history, including the Chinese Exclusion Act, the Bellingham Riots, the Immigration Act of 1924, naturalized citizenship, the Alien Law Land, Japanese internment camps, post-9/11 racism, the Muslim ban, and the anti-Asian hate. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans continue to cultivate, advance, and lead in the fields of art, fashion, business, tech, education, science, government, law, humanities, medicine, sports, entertainment. California is home to over 6.3 million Asian and Pacific Islander Americans, more than any other state. They are amongst the fastest-growing ethnic populations in our nation. It is home to the, California is home to the first Sikkordwara here at Stockton and the first Buddhist temple in San Francisco. This district, Sacramento City Unified School District, has over 9,000 students who identify as Asian, American, Pacific Islander. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the month of May 2024 and every May thereafter be recognized as Asian, American, Pacific Islander Heritage Month here in SAC City Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any comment from board members? I know, I feel like I should be asking that. Public comment.
We do not have a public comment.
Just love to hear your voice. Any of my board members want to share? I do, it's a fabulous voice. Any of my board members have anything they'd like to share? I'll be waiting for you to get into queue. So move by, seconded. Student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
So move.
Item 9.5, A- through G Incentive Grant. Ms. Espinoza. Good evening. Floor is all yours.
Good evening, Superintendent Allen and member of the boards. I am joined tonight by a whole, our amazing team that's been working diligently over this last year on this particular effort. So, tonight I have my colleagues Jill Tom and Hillary Harrell, who's here as well. Last fall, I believe, we came, as you know, we can click the next slide here. Oh, I have it. Sorry about that. Well, we'll begin with our guiding principle. I think this, this particular effort is a, a great example of how we have recognized that our system is inequitable by design. And this is one way that we are working towards ensuring that all of our students have as many options, you know, post-high school. So, last fall, we came to you to present a plan that CDE had granted us, an A- through G incentive grant. This isn't something that we applied for. It was given to us based on the student, the funding amount was based on the students that we serve. And the idea was to increase the A- through G completion rate. I'm not going to go through every detail, but A- through G, the UCs and CSU's require that students take a minimum of 15 courses within these core subject areas, which are referred to the A- through G requirements. So our goal was to increase the A- through G completion rate among our students. Historically in our district, I'm sharing this data from 2019 to 2020, we saw a steady increase. There was a decrease, you know, given the impact of COVID. And then we saw a slight increase last year to 50.5. And that's, that's pretty much where we have stayed. This is our goal, we're trying to increase this, given the impact of COVID. This is also in alignment with our LCAP goal. This is a draft goal, but this contributes. The A- through G completion rate is one of the factors that goes into the CCI indicator. So we wanted to make sure that we make that present here as well. Why did we decide to tackle the ninth grade? There's, there's a plethora of research out there. And I'll just take, just a few seconds to, to read this, because I think this is, this kind of goes to the heart of why it is that we're focusing our efforts in this work. So course failures have an outsized impact on students' likelihood of graduating. In the Consortium's 2007 report, What Matters for Staying on Track and Graduating Chicago Public Schools, we showed that 1F in a year-long course in the ninth grade decreases the probability of eventually graduating by 30 percentage points. Even if a student has strong test scores, 2Fs in ninth grade decrease the probability of graduating by over 50 percentage points, from 85% to 33%. So this was what, the research that we used to really hone in on ninth grade. So this was what, the research that we used to really hone in on ninth grade. So what that looks like here locally for our district, what we saw, what, at the time of pulling this data, when this grant came out, was that our, our data mimics what's happening nationwide and in the state of California. So we see that about 90% of our freshmen start on track, we are giving them the opportunities. However, after semester one, about 50% of them, you know, become off track because of the failures, and you just saw with the impact of at least 1D and then 2Fs on, on their report cards and the trajectory in high school. So we got together, we very quickly developed a plan, our aim was to increase the A through G completion rate, and the change idea was by formulating or creating houses or teaming groups of students and freshmen, in the freshman year, through the master schedule, we were going to develop some wraparound services, we were going to hire some ninth-grade leads, these are the amazing teachers behind me, and we were going to do some calibration of curriculum support, and then it provide, through the leadership of our principals, some wraparound services and provide intentional support to our ninth grades. So that was the plan and the proposal. Now, what you're going to, you're going to hear now from our Hiram Johnson team, and they're going to describe what that looked like on the ground the fall semester, so I'll invite the Hiram team up.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, a lot of the data that propelled our investment in this was already shared with you. I do want to call out one thing, and it reminds me, the last time we were here talking about different tiers, where Board President Phillips said, "Why do if we know some kids are already tier two or tier three, are we waiting?", was one of the things. So I do want to call out, when we say everyone starts on track, it's because we start over, right? We know we have some deficits to make up, but it appears that everyone's on track, though we know not everyone is. But we thought, for sure, if we reduced the number of teachers working collaboratively in the team, we could get more strong agreements, and we could have better connections with our students on campus. So that was the main goal of us, was to give them some connectivity among students in their houses, and reduce the number of teachers involved in ninth grade, so that there are stronger relationships with the students and the teachers. With that, at the time, our academic assistant principal, Ms. Tom, and our ninth-grade lead, Hannah Langrell, took over a lot of the work, working with those 16 teachers, I believe, in three houses.
So the master schedule was a tool that we used in order to help provide these supports. So Christina talked about the houses, but the houses created smaller learning environments for these kids, so we had three different houses, and at all the comprehensive high schools, there's like three or four different houses, but then these kids had the same teachers, so these teachers were able to get together and talk about what are the supports we're going to put in place, to see if we're, you know, improving the, the conditions for the students. And then the other thing that the master schedule allowed is we did common preps within curricular teams, so that within the school day, they have been given the time in order to create a guaranteed viable curriculum that, again, better supports the students. So that was the two ways in which the master schedule supported the work that happened during this school year. And then Hannah got in the weeds on that with the teachers.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am here to tell you how I've been supporting the teachers directly, and I have some notes here, I hope you don't mind. We do hold bi-monthly meetings where we talk about students and we strategize supports for them to put into place to address the behavior and grades and attendance, and we consistently come back together to follow up on those issues and see if there's progress. I act as a liaison between the house teachers, the cost team, the counselors, admin, and to unify the support for our students. I'm in classrooms every week. I collect data to inform our decisions and make sure that we are, are on track and doing the right things and effective. And finally, our house teachers have said repeatedly this year, that both in meetings and in surveys, that they feel more supported this year than ever before by being part of our cohort and find our work together critical to their ability to support our students. Thank you.
Okay, so naturally, we wanted to develop a system for progress monitoring. So what Hannah and the Hiram team described was essentially the process for every high school. So we are tracking, the students are on track progressively by quarter, we're checking DNF rates, and we're conducting PDSA cycles, so we're checking in regularly, and we meet with this team every other Friday. As a result of the fall work, we saw, you know, a 2.4 increase overall in terms of the number of students earning a C or better in an A through G course, and this is inclusive of all of the courses. Now, the CK McLatchy team is going to speak to you about how they pivoted and what we did this current semester.
Good evening, Superintendent Allen, Board President Phillips, and distinguished board members. I'm really pleased to introduce you to Miriam Goff. If you don't know Miriam, she is a magician, a teacher magician, and she brings joy every day to ninth graders at McLatchy. I'm going to let her speak first on our two top bullet items.
Okay, so we recognized with our data with pivot, with semester one, we made a shift, where we're still meeting, we have that alignment, but we really found that that initial high-quality instruction and targeted student support in the classrooms was where we got the best bang for the buck. So our teaching teams got together, each of them identified based on their student needs, targets that they were working on with their instruction. So like, one of our classes was really focused on the use of instructional time, making sure that students were starting instruction right when they came into class and finished. So we had common language, we had common approaches, we even had stamps, and it was really cute, because the kids are like, "Do all of you guys have this?" We're like, "Most of us, yeah." And then it was just showing that cohesion, and it was helping just make more sense of what they needed to be expected to do every day. Another one of our teams was really focused on increasing writing across disciplines. So they really looked at how English and how science, how the writing is similar, and expanding on that. Some of our other teams were really focused on just having common norms, on increasing professionalism. So they identified their four Ps, coming prepared, being productive, being polite, and being proactive, and so we systematically introduced that and developed our own targets. And so then, with my support also being in the classroom, it provided that cue to the teachers and also to the students that really connected, made where we had this connected school environment versus just classrooms working on their own. Then for semester two, we focused our intervention, building on that recognition for foundational supports, and really like targeted our students that we were providing interventions to. There's weekly grade updates that I provide with them, we meet three times a week, and we're devoting time right now in our class for grade reflection and missing assignment planning, not just communicating, hey, you got to do this, but like, how do you get this done, and providing time with that. So all come into the classrooms during that time as well, and they're like, "Okay, I've got this." And it's just one more person that you really get the benefits of kind of co-teaching, where you're able to reduce that student-to-teacher ratio, you have someone to support you, and here, the same person knows what I'm doing in my biology class, what I'm doing in my English class, and supporting across the environment. And then we're seeing really great gains so far, and now we're moving into 2024 and 2025.
See what I mean about this energy? So as we move into 2024, we have three kind of big bucket areas that we're looking to capitalize, move forward with some new thinking. The first being really looking at Math 1 in particular, with getting all of the teachers on the same page around common pacing, common assessments, and alignment across all classrooms. So the whole team moving into next year is on board with that, and that, if you know what that's like at a big school, we have like eight to 10 Math 1 teachers, and they're all now moving in the same direction, so we're excited about that. We're also, next year, looking at regrouping a little bit among some of our teams. We actually have, how many teams at McLatchy?
We have seven.
Seven teams at McLatchy. And we are pulling in those who are the most excited and engaged in creating and implementing common assessments. Another thing that has been hard to move the needle on across the whole ninth grade, and now we have everybody on board with doing that, so we're excited about that. And then the third thing that we're looking at next year is really intentionally providing instruction in executive functioning for our ninth graders. So looking at Tara, I know you're a teacher, just that explicit instruction on planning, calendaring, organizing, we're going to provide that in class as part of our daily instruction. So those are, thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Allen, President Phillips, and members of the board. I am Hillary Harrell, the Director of Professional Learning, Educator, and Leadership Development, and I want to express gratitude for Christina Espinoza allowing me to be a part of this work. It's been very exciting. So I'm going to speak to our professional learning. So we had very specific goals this year in terms of taking these five phenomenal teachers and creating a team. And my goal for them this year was really ensuring that they had the supports and the resources and the connections, and we did that through professional learning here at CERN, we did it through school visits and ongoing conversation. As we move into next year, we will be really focusing in on the measurable outcomes in our instructional practices, so we're going to adopt a very tight PDSA cycle, and we're going to change the focus of our meetings to really look at instruction, which they have been doing this year, but we're really going to target our focus. And in closing, I just want to let you all know that these five leads inspire me every day, they are incredibly amazing educators, and we are so lucky to have them.
Hello, everyone, we're so happy to be here to tell you about our program and what we do in our school, so very briefly. Relationship building, we found to be the strongest, most effective thing to do, so building those relationships between the teachers and the students, ourselves and the students, and ourselves and the teachers, incredibly important. We do that to be able to build consistent, healthy habits for the students, arriving on time, how do we talk to them in the classroom, how do they organize their time and materials, and continuing, that's you, clarity?
I'm Siobhan Riley, I'm the ninth-grade lead at Kennedy High School, and I think we're done, so if we have any questions, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer any questions, for the whole team. No, I just would add on our two points, was also, like we said, focusing a lot on our teaching and instruction. One of the things that all five of us have embraced is being able to be in the classroom with teachers, observing what's going on, not as an evaluator, but as a colleague, to be able to really get a feel and, and be able to support what we see in there. And also something we've really been successful with this year at Kennedy that we need to continue next year, is the students themselves understanding what is meant by A through G, and why even if they're sitting there saying, "I don't think a four-year college is for me at this point," why it's very important that they stay kind of eyes on the prize and focused on that path.
I'm Kim Rodriguez from Luther Burbank, and I don't want to keep you overtime, so some of the items, I'll just read quickly through the list, is linking the incoming ninth graders, building greater community with them, so there's a bridge through things like Link Crew and Summer Bridge Program. And then, of course, we use specific data, A through G requirement data, attendance data to evaluate our practice. Thank you.
If anybody has questions for anyone on the team, we're happy to answer.
Public comments, sir?
We have no public comment.
Got it this time. Colleagues? Ms. Jean?
Okay, I've been given another mic, is this one working? Okay. It is. This is so exciting, I, I just love hearing this. When I, I first started hearing like, oh, you're focusing on ninth grade, one of the things I don't think people always recognize is, in education, we, we've fallen into this habit that frankly, from preschool TK all the way through eighth grade, you're going to move forward. And then you get to ninth grade, and all of a sudden, if you don't pass one class, you don't earn the credits you need to graduate, and it's just this like mind-boggling shift in education that I don't think our ninth graders get on a regular basis. They don't understand that, no, 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 this, this really matters. And then you think about being a ninth grader, moving onto a new campus that has a much bigger schedule, usually a much bigger campus than where they've been before, and with our open enrollment, they're coming from all over these places. And so the importance of building a high school culture and safety, I, I love that you're doing houses, right? It creates a smaller space for these kids to succeed and thrive in, and it gives teachers an ability to work together to focus on the students that could slip through the cracks so easily. So there's just so much exciting stuff happening here. I love that, as I was beginning to listen, I, the teacher brain in me was like, "How are you doing this, how are you doing this?", and you guys addressed most of them, which was just fantastic. How to be a successful student, right? Like just learning what it means to be in high school and to balance six to seven to eight classes, depending on your schedule, and, and that many different expectations from teachers and different content areas. I love that you have, are building towards like common literacy approaches. How do we read, how do we write, how do we speak and listen, how do we research, how do we process information, and then where can we do that in commonality through subject areas, so that the kids, like, so often, these ninth graders don't make the connection that what I'm doing in this class applies to all my other classes, they just use different language. So I love that we're working on, like, how do we bring, so I do actually have questions, I'll stop rambling. The first one is, what is the process for building that commonality? How are the teachers working together to make sure that what's happening from subject area to subject area is, is consistent and effective for our students?
I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself, I'm Daisy Pyatt from Rosemont High School, the lead there, and one of the ways that they deal, that they build that commonality, as you asked, is we have common prep times. So currently, each house has the same prep for those teachers, we have English, Social Studies, and Biology meeting together. They also have CT time on Thursdays in subject areas, so they will do cross-curricular planning, they will decide, how are we going to be checking, assessing, what, what's important to talk to them about, and then kind of repeat that in the different areas, even though the subjects may not overlap. So that's basically how they plan for that.
Excellent.
Did that clarify?
It did, I, I heard the common prep time, I was actually getting more into the interpersonal, like, those conversations can be really challenging, and so how are we, I, I see somebody, like, how do we support teachers in those conversations? Someone else want to address that?
Conversations about?
Building commonality.
So at the beginning of the year in Hiram Johnson, I brought to them, we have historically a lot of behavior issues, the teachers come and say, "Oh, there are all these behavior things." So we looked at best practices to address behavior, and we came up with three agreements at the beginning of the year, and so all cohort teachers were going to greet students at the door when they came in, they're going to have learning intentions and success criteria on the board and go through that at the beginning and at the end of class, and also have engagement strategies throughout the class to get kids moving and up. So I created a walkthrough form that I shared with them, I said, "We're going to keep ourselves accountable to this," and then we, throughout the year, I would go in their classrooms, I would talk to them, talk to kids, and I would also collect that data and share it with them at the end of the year, this is what I saw, or at the end of the semester. So that's where we've started so far.
Excellent, thank you. And then my next big question is, how are you seeing the workload shifting? Because in, in education as teachers, it feels like, and I'm really, this is every one of the positions in education, more and more is being asked, and there just isn't enough time. So ideally, something's coming off the plate so that they can focus on this, and/or they're seeing the shifting of the workload, because we're now more of a team doing it together rather than not. So just, how is that workload shifting, just to make sure that people aren't feeling overwhelmed and exhausted by, this is a lot to ask, it's a big ask of everybody.
I'll speak for Kennedy, but I think I echo the others. Is this position, being a teacher out of the classroom without a teaching load, has made a huge difference for my teachers, because we're not just asking them to do things, or at least in my case, whenever I make an ask, I say, "And here's what I can do to help you." So for example, like, one of our big focuses for third quarter was family outreach, which we always are telling teachers, "Have you called home, have you called home?", and they're like, "When should I do that?" And so it's really, as a teacher, it's really nice to be able to say to a fellow teacher, "Just send me those names, I got you," you know, or "Just send me the names and I'll add it to the Infinite Campus contact log," or being able to not just ask, but then say, "Okay, here's where I think I can help, is that going to work for you?" And I have a lot of teachers that have taken me up on that, and they will just say, "I cannot send these four emails, I just don't have the time, can you do it?" Or they'll say, "I did send these four emails, I can't follow up, can I CC you and have them follow up with you?" So I think just having, like, having an extra person who can spread the work around has made a really big difference, and it's also helped build a lot of the trust in the team, that, that people are much willing to do something if they know they're going to get something back and they've got some help on the, on the side for it.
Excellent, for sure. I'm really excited to see the success of this. I'm really excited to see the success of this program in four years and to see how it continues to build and grow so that we can see that this inaugural class in 2028 is way higher A to G, right? Like that's the goal. I'm excited for that. Last really silly question, do the houses have names? Excellent. Thank you.
Naming was one of the hardest parts for us. So we have the Titan Learner Profiles, Communicator, Collaborator, there's six of them. Yeah. And so each of our houses took two of the names. Like we have the Collaborative Critical Thinkers. Erin Leoni, Teacher of the Year, is one of the teachers. She's in the Community Minded Communicators Group. And so they have a focus that matches our Titan Learner profile. And then they got shirts that match their houses. The little ninth graders run around in their shirts and they're really cute. So it's fun.
Sharks, Rattlers, and Eagles.
Well, actually at McClatchy, we are more, we're just Class of 2027. So where we have seven houses, we were very strategic in like focusing our focus, but also making sure with our inclusive practice, our specialty programs, that we don't single out students. So we are very much Class of 2027. Go Lions. It's been working well.
Okay, it's really embarrassing because I can only remember three of the four house names. It's evading me. But we use this five-star program to help with our passes and attendance to events and things. And within that program, they already had four houses made up. And it's Canis, Cepius, Orion, and something else. And we call us the Superstars because they're all stars, you know, and they're galaxies. But yes, we have a lot of fun. We try to build community in that sense and have competitions between the houses.
Ours are just synonyms for cougars. The Pumas, the Catamounts, and the mountain lion. And then with the Biology teacher as our activities director, so that's how we got so many names for two cats.
Okay. None of my other colleagues have anything to say about this? We're just floored. I'm going to speak for everybody tonight that we're just floored. And you know how when kids come into school and they're like, you have a buddy? Our teachers have buddies. I'm taking this back to CPS. We don't change some stuff. So I appreciate, this was an information item. Thank you very much. And we're going to move on. Thanks. B-A-B, nine point six. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. I'm Terrence Gladney, the Chair of the Black African American Advisory Board. And we're here again for our annual report. And I first want to uplift our role and purpose as stated in policy. We are primarily here to review, monitor, and evaluate the district's implementation of the board-adopted recommendations, of which there are 13. Monitoring is very important because it speaks to systemic outcomes and capabilities. I got a question from a board member before the meeting about, you know, are you guys going to get F's? Are you guys up to a D? You know, based on our previous presentations. But when I engage my young scholars, especially around middle school, what I teach them is to monitor their own progress. So while we are tasked with monitoring, it's also a district responsibility to know where you are. So our scholars have Infinite Campus. And I would hope that the system has a way to evaluate you guys' current status so that you don't have to ask what your grade is. In our space, we uplift the Swahili phrasing of Habarigani. And it means what's new and good in your worlds. And we do that because we know that despite the generational and historical failures to Black students within education, there are good things that are happening. And it's our goal and our hope that we can expand those and span them across the system.
Thanks for calling the Black African American Advisory Board. We are unable to answer your call because we are out doing the urgent work necessary to support our African-American students and help them reach their full potential. If you have any questions and would like to get involved, please leave your name and number and we'll get back to you.
Thank you for calling.
That is Trace and Cam, the two scholars at John Cabralo. And they won our contest to record the voicemail greeting, which is our first public-facing access to our organization. It keeps us grounded in the work that we're doing, knowing that we're here to serve scholars and represent scholars in our work. We also often like to reflect in our spaces about the historical occurrences that are pertinent to the work that we're doing. And we typically do Today in Black History, but for the purposes of tonight, we focus on This Week in Black History. And May 18th, 1896, was a Plessy versus Ferguson decision that basically uplifted Jim Crow, not only in education and within certain components of our society, but across our society. And it stated, obviously, that separate but equal was okay. And we know how that ended. May 17th, 1954, we had the Brown versus Board of Education decision. And Danielle, can you maybe play that for me, please?
On May 17th, 1954, the U.S. Supreme Court issued its landmark decision in the case of Brown versus Board of Education. The court ruled unanimously that racial segregation in public schools violated the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution. This decision grew out of several cases that challenged racial segregation in schools across America. Because the lawsuits addressed the same legal questions, the Supreme Court consolidated them into one case. Its lead plaintiff was Oliver Brown. He sued the Topeka, Kansas Board of Education on behalf of his daughter, Linda. She was a Black public school student who lived just a few blocks from an elementary school in Topeka. However, she was forced to travel over an hour to reach the all-black school she was assigned to attend. When she tried to enroll in the closer neighborhood school, which was all white, the request was denied. In the U.S. Supreme Court, Brown was represented by NAACP lawyer Thurgood Marshall. He argued that segregated schools were harmful and left Black children with feelings of inferiority. The court unanimously decided in Brown's favor, declaring that separate educational facilities were, without exception, unequal. Chief Justice Earl Warren declared that, quote, "In the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place." And while it didn't happen immediately, this ruling paved the way for integration and was a major victory for the civil rights movement.
It's important to reflect upon that, right? Tomorrow is 70 years ago that this decision happened. And we have to recognize that while we implement language, it doesn't mean that we implement actions that speak to the intent of the language. We have to ask ourselves if 70 years later, are we all on the same level playing field? We know that in this system, in this district, Black students are in many ways still segregated. We have schools that are isolated. We have lack of access to some programs that people deem to be of the highest quality. And we know that Black people, Black students are in some ways isolated without access to good outcomes. And in that vein, you know, it's important for us to reflect upon language and policy that we enact on paper and figure out, are we actually speaking to the intent and carrying out the intent of what we put on paper? And are we speaking the truth as to what we say we stand for? So we revisit Resolution Number 3381, which was passed in February of this year, in which we, as an organization, partner with staff to develop a Black History Month resolution that had more intent, had more actionable actions and items within it. And we sort of want to just revisit like where we are a couple months later. While the language in the resolution speaks to the African-American task force, B-A-B nowhere in the resolution was uplifted by name, although we were an active partner in the development of not only the intent, but also the initial draft language. And there were many phrases and actions that were stricken, as you see on the screen. One of which was that we would, with district in partnership, continue the series of listening sessions, of which we were initial enceptors, right? So here we have the initial listening sessions that we did in 2022. We followed up with an anniversary celebration in 2023. Yet in 2024, when we partner with staff to draft this resolution, B-A-B is not mentioned by name. And too often in our system, our scholars are not uplifted by name. As you'll see later why that's important, especially tonight with some of the presentations that have come forward and will come forward a little bit later. Who is the B-A-B? Who are we? We represent many different components of our society professionally. And it's important to note that all of our members have at least six to 10 years of experience in our professional fields, with over 50% of our members having over 20 years of experience. Within our specific school district, we are integrated and very present across the entire spectrum of this district and the mechanisms that make it work. We are the most qualified to change the outcomes for Black scholars. We should be listed by name in this resolution and in all things moving forward. As our statute says, we should not just be monitoring, we should be a foundational component in the outcomes of Black scholars. But beyond those professional qualifications and skill sets and our committees that we interact and serve on, we are individuals. And we represent scholars. We're here for a reason. And we uplift their voices into the work that we're doing and all the other spaces that we encompass. But we also recognize that we stand on the shoulders of ancestors and elders. And we carry out the journey that they started so long before us. And we're still fighting the same battles that they started. And because of them, we're hopeful that we can continue to push forward towards more positive outcomes for our scholars. Our North Star is always the recommendations. It's at the center of everything that we do. In any space that we go in and we present the recommendations, anyone professionally in education, they says, this is the answer. And the reason is because the task forces that preceded B-A-B, it was a giant think tank of people qualified to come up with these recommendations. And this very body, even though the composition was different, you guys adopted them because you guys believe in them as part of the answer as to how to change the outcomes for Black scholars. Again, revisiting Resolution Number 3381, we see that there are obviously disproportionate outcomes for Black scholars, specifically around suspensions. We're talking about culture and climate suspensions, disproportionality in terms of identification for special education, and also chronic absenteeism. Another stricken statement spoke specifically to culture and climate with time-specific actions that would be enacted with staff. And we know that professional development for educators is very important, but across the entire system, professional development and cultural responsiveness and awareness is critical. And because of that, we understand that some of the barriers that exist, we have already started reaching out to labor partners. We have a meeting scheduled at SCTA next week. And we have pending conversations with the remainder of the labor partners that we can remove any obstacles to implementing the recommendations and the work that is necessary. And not even just necessary, it's imperative and it's critical. Another of the statements that did not make the resolution that was adopted was around the creation and the identification of a building that would serve as a safe space for Black families and students, as well as staff. We know that in our district, again, when we talk about segregation, there are safe spaces for many scholars because we have things such as small learning communities and small high schools, specialized programs that serve specific students. But yet the most historically failing population does not have a space identified for them. But again, when we uplift the concept of Habarigani, the good news is that we've done the work. And you guys have done the work. And you guys have started the conversation by re-elevating to the conversation, the 7-Eleven committee, talking about vacant spaces that we have. The other good news is that we've done the work to identify a space that could potentially serve as that space, safe space for Black families. It's the Floren Technology Center. It's at the corner of Floren and 24th. It is directly across the street from what we call Sacramento's Black Wall Street. It is directly across the street from the County Health and Human Services Building. It's directly down the street from Burbank High School, which serves a high population of Black students. That's great news. When we again revisit the resolution, when we talk about curriculum and instruction, we're following a presentation on A through G compliance in a grant. In the resolution, you guys adopted, it noted that only 12% of Black scholars are college and career-ready. It didn't spell out the A through G compliance, but that was only 11%. What I did not hear in the presentation that preceded us, again, was Black scholars called up by name. I saw the overarching A through G compliance of 50%, but here we have students that are only reaching that capacity at 11%. But they did not make it into that presentation. We talked about ninth graders as an entire population with no priority or urgency around Black scholars. We also see that only 30% of Black scholars met ELA standards by grade level. We saw, we see that only 17% met math standards. And again, this data is lagging data, as Ed likes to say, because it's from 2223, but that's the system that we operate in. But if we monitor our own outcomes, we know that we can identify real-time data. But I don't think that, you know, if we pick a year, it's going to look too, you know, much too different. The resolution did include language around Black history curriculum, many strategies. I don't know that we moved the needle or that we have started in that vein yet since February. But again, the good news is that we have a template and we have board policy that tells us how it can be achieved. It tells us the roadmap that we must follow to adopt new curriculum. The good news is that we have an existing relationship with our district at multiple levels. We have a liaison, Daniel R. Larry, who is also a partner with us in drafting the original language of the resolution. We have Board President Phillips and First Vice President Singh as our liaisons to B-A-B. So we're empowered right now. We have the access and resources and we have the mechanisms in place to make this happen. The good news is that we've partnered with current staff, like Crystal Thomas, the Head of Special Education. We still have a connection with Vincent Harris, who was a previous liaison at the cabinet level. The good news is that there's templates of African-American achievement frameworks that already exist, research-based strategies that have worked and continue to work. The good news is that locally, we saw the St. Hope Scholars come up here. What they have access to through a concurrent enrollment agreement through SAC City is access to culturally responsive curriculum. They have access to a hip-hop course through SAC City. This morning, I was at SAC High for their signing day. The room was filled with Black and Brown scholars, mostly Black scholars, announcing their intention to either attend trade school, community college, or four-years universities, including UC CSU's and Ivy League schools. They supplement that with a curriculum full of Black History Month activities and has resulted in the outcomes I saw this morning. The good news is that not too far away, Oakland has an African-American male achievement initiative and it's directly aligned with SEL. It's one of the pillars that we stand on in this district. The good news is that they have this KEPRA curriculum that is easily accessible to all districts to implement the things that we said we're going to do in February. Culturally relevant curriculum for students of color that is both engaging and academically rigorous. Sounds like A through G. Sounds like addressing chronic absenteeism. Sounds like it's possible. The good news is that they have many clients that we can reflect on and get best practice information from, and we can get experience and narratives from to see how they did it both right and wrong. And we can go into it in an informed capacity to make it better for our students when we adopt it. The good news is in Berkeley High School, in Berkeley Unified, they have a complete African-American Studies Department. 55 years to this year, it will be the anniversary, the 55th anniversary of the African-American Studies Department. They have courses such as Spanish in the African Diaspora, which again speaks to A through G compliance, but it also allows students to see, outside of being Black, it allows non-Black students to see where they exist within Africanism. They have PE courses like African Diaspora Dance. And they have courses that meet some of those A through G gaps, like African-American literature, all of which are A through G compliant. And in Oakland, they have AP English for. And in Oakland, they have AP English for their ninth graders in African-American literature. That's great news. The great news is that we have a partner, Berkeley Unified School Board Member Laura Babbitt, who wrote a letter of support. She says that the time is now for our scholars. You guys have all been emailed a copy of the complete letter. We have partners through B triple A B, they have an organization that basically took the work that we started here in SAC City, and they've done the same thing in Berkeley. They have an entire framework for their Black students. That is great news. I uplift again into the spacey acabin, which is a call to action. And at this time, I would like everyone in the room to stand and state your intention to stand with Black scholars and change these outcomes now. And if the camera could pan to the room so we can see who stands in solidarity with us, please, including board members, staff, and any members of the community. Thank you. Our action plan is to complete the staff toolkit that was committed to in the resolution, implement African-American Studies courses, create a safe space for Black families and students, and to create a subcommittee around special education. Thank you.
I do not have a slide that says questions. I just assume that they're going to come.
I know, we were waiting for the purple slide. No, I was assessing the cooling off period, and that's what I kind of said that was. So, okay. It's not like we have questions. I think that a lot of
Oh, I'm sorry, there's
Public comment. And I forgot, yeah, sorry.
We have three speakers on this topic, Malachi Smith, followed by Franchelle Brown and Ashley Bennett.
Okay. Honest I did.
Good evening. I'm Malachi Smith. I'm one of the parents on the Parent Engagement Committee for our local B triple A B. I'm just glad to be part of this committee, this board, because of the fact that I've learned so much. I've learned things about the educational level of SAC City Unified School District. I've also learned that if you want to have a child or go through this system, then you have to be a participant. So I'm just here to support my grandson, and I'd just like to say that we put a lot of work into the community, into our meetings, and to being very supportive of those who need our assistance. So thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Franchelle Brown. Not only am I a member of the B triple A B, I'm also a graduate of Sacramento City Unified School District, and I'm quite proud of that fact. You know, I was the first, one of my grandchildren, my grandparents' grandchildren to graduate from high school. So I'm really proud of that fact. But as a parent and as a member of the community, I joined the board because I want to speak to the outrageous, a number of Black children being suspended for school. In the United States of America, the federal government reigns supreme. So the laws that the federal government set, it reigns supreme, no matter what your policy is, no matter what your state says, the federal government reigns supreme. So with that being said, every time a Black child in the city of Sacramento Unified School District is suspended for exercising their constitutional right, you're violating it. Your policy, that zero tolerance policy, you're violating those children's constitutional right, and it needs to come to a stop. I have a case study where I showed the safety officer, why does this little girl, little girl got slapped? She got suspended for fighting back. Was she supposed to stand there and just let the other girl beat on her? No, she wasn't. And when she stood there, when the confrontation started, she walked over to an adult, and the adult turned his back on her. It's all caught on video. But that's my main reason for coming to the board and joining them, is so that we can really put a big bite in suspension of little African-American children. Thank you.
Kind of tall there. Good evening, Superintendent and members. My name is Ashley Bennett, and I am a parent of a student within the Sacramento City Unified School District. I joined the B triple A B board because I witnessed a troubling trend. Children in our district aren't being valued. Instead of being nurtured to excel, they're often treated as mere financial figures. I noticed a tendency to diagnose them with disorders instead of recognizing that they simply may be experiencing temporary difficulties. My aim in joining is to advocate for our Black and African-American children, as well as their parents, who feel their voices are overlooked. I've visited a couple of schools within a district, and I see this on a constant. You can't be a full school district if you don't have the representation in the school. Representation does matter. That's it.
Thank you. You want to take up the last minute that we had, Mr. Glendy? Are you okay? Okay.
Any questions?
Okay, so now I think I am at the appropriate time at which I can consider any statements from my colleagues this evening. Mr. Singh?
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I first want to appreciate you bringing up the A through G requirements. It's an important piece to remember that disaggregating data is important. So I think that's going to be a follow-up question that I would be asking to learn more about, specifically, you know, targeting and figuring out how to improve those numbers. And we've talked about this, that if you are able to support the students all the way at the bottom, then you're uplifting everyone collectively. And then, you know, we've talked about this, I am that person. I do want to know how we're doing, right? Of course, I'm happy to go to the system and figure out how we're doing, but the truth is, I know that there's work to do, right? I do also know that, having been a past teacher, that finding resources and finding ways to support our children of all backgrounds is imperative to them feeling comfortable in the spaces that they're in. And my commitment remains, working with you and working with the B triple A B, especially as a liaison, to find more ways to be supportive, and hopefully in the future, working to make sure that those resolutions and any other concerns you have are addressed proactively. My question, though, is with the data, I think last year you presented a lot, and are there spaces where you feel that the trajectory is in a way that we can move quickly on certain subject areas? Like, are we close on something that you feel really strongly about? I mean, I don't want to make you go through the slides again, but I feel like you said we're on the way, we're close on some things. Do you feel like there's something actionable that you still think can happen in the next couple of months, that you have a specific recommendation that we can actually act on or you would like us to act on?
Yeah, so again, just reflecting on the resolution, one of the most actionable things was the creation of a toolkit based on the feedback from our listening sessions. So I know that that is in progress, obviously, right? Because it's disaggregating the feedback and figuring out, how do we prioritize what the community's voice is speaking towards? But also, I think that, you know, again, just all the examples that I've lifted, I mean, there's an entire menu of options in terms of how we engage African-American Studies curriculum, right? We can do a concurrent enrollment model like St. Hope does. We can go, you know, with a single course and pilot it either in the summer or, you know, probably fall of like '25, or we can just go all-in. The thing that I learned when I was researching is that the organization that Oakland Unified uses and obviously all of the other school districts is that they have its sort of à la carte. You can call in, and they'll give you pricing, and we can start doing that. So it's not something that we have to develop, right? So it's something that's there, and I think that there is a collective will, obviously from our space, but also the community, to change outcomes for Black students, right? So, you know, again, we talk about A through G requirements. And to your question, I spoke with Ms. Espinoza at the LCAP meeting earlier this week, and I asked her your specific question, like, what do the A through G gaps look like for Black students? And because we have a data sharing agreement with UC Merced, and those tools exist, it is something that we can extract and figure out real-time. So she showed me that she can look at any point in time and figure out where the gaps are, right? If it's 46% is in ELA, 50% is in math, so once we disaggregate that, you know, if we have the biggest gap, as she stated, you know, in ELA and math for all students, including African-American students, we could implement an African-American literature course, or we could just very simply say, let's have a higher presence of books that reflect those students in these courses, right? And I've spoken this for years, is that it just amazes me that we celebrate that we have ethnic studies, and that's within the, what, last five years we adopted ethnic studies? I graduated Berkeley High in '96. We had ethnic studies as sort of an also ran. We had African-American Studies, Chicano-Latino Studies. So yes, it's great that we're moving in that direction, but five years is not moving the needle at the pace at which these outcomes speak. So how is it that all ethnicities other than Eurocentric ethnicities have to fit within one course, when we have an entire curriculum across the system that reflects Eurocentrism and is one of, you know, if we want to call it a continent or not? How is it that they get represented across the entire curriculum, and everybody else has to sort of find a seat at this small kids' table, you know, if we're going to use the Thanksgiving analogy, right? At what point do the majority of people in this world, we're one of the most diverse districts anywhere, but our curriculum doesn't speak to it? We have to start acting upon what we say we stand for. Thank you.
Mr. Kaata?
Terrence, I want to thank you for this presentation, other board members, your continued work. I think something, Terrence, that you've been saying multiple times, and I don't think that this district has taken to heart, is you shouldn't have to give such a powerful presentation for us to take action. You all shouldn't have to be doing the work that we have paid people that should be doing. I'm concerned that, I know we have so many problems in this district, that there might be almost a sense of relief that we have such a strong B triple A B, that kind of that box is checked, and we're not doing the work we need to be doing. Number one thing that speaks to me is, you know, you go around the district, you see kids starting at TK kindergarten, right? Our full age of our student population, they're all like the same kids when they come in this district, but somehow by the time they get to 12th grade, if they get to 12th grade, very disparate impacts, and we've been doing a great job of measuring that data. It's time to move from the measurement to the action and to understand, you know, what is it? I think, I believe it was in the slide or maybe it was a previous presentation, but, you know, we need more Black adults in our schools to be role models to these kids and to understand if they're going through something that maybe a white educator doesn't really get, that there's a voice. And if we can't do enough to hire internally, that's bringing someone in, right? Partner, create a space for Black families to get resources. I agree 100% with all that. You know, I think it was the last board meeting when we talked about campus safety, it's like, okay, what do we do if we don't have the resources in-house to really meet these kids' needs as we're bringing community partners? If we know we're not meeting the needs of our Black students, our Black scholars, why aren't we bringing in people who have expertise? I really appreciate your suggestions. Again, 100%, everything in here, I'm with it. I just wish you didn't have to bring it to us. I wish we had it to present to you. But again, thank you for putting our feet to the fire. Thank you all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then I'll speak. It seems like it's broken record. Over and over again, we keep hearing the same thing. We know that there's a problem, and we need to fix the problem. My opinion, and maybe I'll just state that as an individual, is that there are uncomfortable conversations that cannot be held. Somehow, we're not having them, and that, just the way it feels to me is that, you know, Black students, Black folks in general, are set aside, ignored, discounted, because no one wants to talk about it. And the more we talk about it, the more folks who feel uncomfortable with it will either get on the boat or the bus or find somewhere else to go. And I understand, like, everything that you've said, as, you know, a Black woman on this particular board, like, this last four years has been really rough. And, you know, even though I wanted to fight the good fight, a lot of times, it's difficult because you're in a room where you're saying what needs to be said, and people are uncomfortable, and then it gets shut down. So, like, I, it's not a preaching to the choir, because there's always something that I can stand to learn. At the same time, though, like, and, you know, I'm looking at my colleagues because, you know, for the last, at least the last three years that I've been here, it's been a struggle to even get to the point where we could even look at some of the programs that they have at St. Hope, where you're like, we don't even have, and I guess maybe we're going to get close to that at some point, hopefully, where we'll be able to offer, you know, dual enrollment for all of our students, and they don't have to go to special schools to get that. It just, it feels like, even sitting here and president of the school board, it's still very isolating. I'm still very alone, and, you know, I want to say what needs to be said. It's not the fact that we need Black teachers here, and no offense, Mr. Kaata, because I'm not snapping back or anything, but it's not just the fact that we need Black teachers here, but we also need to have that respect for Black educators who come here. So just because you're here is not going to fix the problem. We could hire all Black teachers and have, you know, complete not-so-Black admins and have a bunch of folks leaving at the end of the year, even at the middle of the year. So that comfort level that people need to have in these places where they want to take the risk to come help our students, specifically these Black students, and if we lift them, we're lifting everyone else and worrying about whether, oh, we're going to leave these people behind, or they're going to lose something. No, actually, everyone is going to ride on our improvement. But it's hard to have that conversation. It's hard to talk to folks about, you know, we want to leave the white folks behind so we can do something for the Black students. Okay, because I don't think that you guys are being left behind as much as we have been historically and systemically left behind. So, like, I usually come from a place of moderate disgust and anger when I talk about the way things have been and the way that they always will be. And so, I mean, I realize I'm always going to have the same, you know, frame of mind that I'm like, I don't, I want to talk about Black students. That doesn't mean that I don't want to talk about the other students, but I think that the focus truly is having the conversations and the uncomfortable conversations, and if someone's rolling their eyes at you because you're talking about the fact that, you know, a particular area, which I will not name, doesn't have a high school or a middle school, and our kids are suffering, why are we not having those uncomfortable conversations? So, you know, election year is what it is, and I don't know what this place is going to look like when things change, but we still need to have those uncomfortable conversations. And quite frankly, it is disturbing that I have to keep hearing them from that side and not from this side. But that's my experience.
And I think for us, it's a shared experience. Again, we are integrated and present. We're not just present, we are engaged in doing the work in spaces such as LCAP and other, you know, community schools advisory. And the data is always the same, but yet there's never a priority on Black students. Even when we came forward with the resolution, with the precedent set by you guys in terms of how resolutions could be carried out for other students, we went with that model because there had been no change in governments or policy, but yet when we sought the same actionable items within our resolution, the response was, well, that wasn't the correct way to do it, so we're trying to do it better, right? But there has been no change in governance, policy, or anything else, but yet Black students have to wait while you guys get your stuff together, and that's not okay, right? And when we look at the slide around the labor unions and everything else, look, the one thing that is always consistent in this system is that more dollars come into the system. The other consistent thing is the failure of outcome for Black students. So we're seeking to have those conversations with labor to say, now that adults have their needs met, how do we make sure that there's a change in outcome for these students that have been historically under for these students that have been historically underserved? How is it that the trajectory of dollars has, you know, quadrupled or whatever it is over X number of years, but we still have black students at the bottom? Right? Other populations have escalated and, and have succeeded in the system, but black students have not. And that's not okay. Right? So our goal is that by including statements from other Board of Education members, you guys can see yourself in this work. Right? By including other examples of curriculum instruction, our staff can see themselves in this work. We don't want to sit anymore and just keep presenting the same data. Like, we have to take a step forward, right? When I go up to elementary schools, like, you know, I have, well, gee, he's taller now, but I know since he's a little bit shorter, right? So I usually just give his, kids a high five. Right? So if they're short or whatever, they may say, like, I can't do that. Right? It's too high. But they never will leap in faith if they don't raise their hand, if they don't jump off the ground. And this district has been rooted on the ground for too long. Nobody's willing to raise their hand and reach and see how high is the ceiling. Nobody's willing to leave their feet. They just stand there and just say, well, that's too much for us to do. We're not going to do anything. That's not okay. And, and Board Member Babbitt said that the time is now. You guys have too much precedent before you. There's too many examples in too close proximity. Berkeley Unified has stated, they are a willing partner. We've been in their space. There is no reason that we don't take a leap and see. We may fall, but we can get up. But we cannot stand still any longer. I've been doing this work for far too long in this district as a volunteer. My kids are grown. Terrence has graduated. Leila's in her second year at Davis. But Gee is my kid. All the kids that I encompass, black, brown, anybody else, I've given my heart to this district and I'm asking you guys to just lift a finger. Please.
We got to come up with one way to lift a finger, y'all. And maybe that means that every time we get a report, or we get a report out, or someone comes up to speak to us, maybe we're actually getting that disaggregated information as, as a standard. Could that be some way, like, I'm asking questions, because y'all know. I don't run a district, but I, I do know if there's a way that if we're going to have presentations from staff, that it would be helpful for us to always and require that we have the disaggregated data so that we are actually at least doing that move to say, and these students. And by the way, because, you know, we, so many things happened this evening. We celebrated so many students, but I saw the holes. So, I mean, if that's something that we can do, where every time we get something that has data that we specifically split it off and make sure that we are highlighting, that would make me happy to start. Alrighty. Now I'm a little off track, so let me. Oh, Mr. Singh.
I, I, I just want to respond, and I know this is not the process that we're in, but I, I just want to say this. We do get, we do get data. We get data. We've seen a lot of data, and I appreciate us getting more data. I think, I think, I'm assuming what Terrence is asking us is to lift a finger, which means we actually have to do something with the data. We have a lot of data.
And, and I mean, I think that, you know, this is low-hanging fruit, right? I don't ask the scholars that I come across, I don't ask them to learn calculus if they're learning multiplication. I tell them, like, let's go ahead and work our way up the ladder. I understand that we've been laying low for so long. I'm not asking you guys to leap on top of the ceiling, right? So I think that these are things that have been committed to in the resolution. Again, just for the record, I don't know if the camera captured, everyone stood up. That has to mean something. Don't stand because you feel pressured, like, we want the willing. Don't stand because your neighbor stood up. Stand because your heart is in it. And when you see a black kid, it's not just another statistic. Gee is not a statistic, that is a young man. Stand up because you care about his future. Stand up because you see him as a beacon of hope and light and you know that he's capable of greatness like I do. And if not, just sit down. So we can look over you and look into the horizon and see who's actually willing to do the work. Because words don't mean anything. This doesn't mean anything unless we stop looking at data, all these different little micro points, and, oh, let's, let's have a meeting for this and a meeting for this. Like, I am meeting it out. Like, these gray hairs didn't only come from my kids. Like, for real. It's come from LCAP, Bond Oversight, all these different spaces, because we keep talking in circles and then back up at the same point. That's what a circle is. We need to start making pathways and moving forward. Staff Toolkit, I know Danny's working on it. African-American Studies. You guys write checks for everything else. Let's, let's write a check and see where it lands. I'm sure I could find a high school principal that's willing to give you. Kids I work with, even in men's and women's leadership, we can, we can do, like, micro tests to see if students respond to it and with, like, like, let's, let's do something. There isn't a vacant building. I know that that has to go through the 7-Eleven process. Elevate that into the conversation, or maybe pull that out of the conversation. Let's go ahead and create the space. There's resources literally across the street in both directions for black families and staff. It's in your area, DeChanua. It's right there. It's right down the street from Burbank. Subcommittee, Crystal already says she's willing to do it, right? So we, again, will offer our time and resources because we have people specialized in that work. Social workers, people that come from youth justice system. We have people to do that work around discipline, everything else. We're ready. We're beyond 50%. We're beyond halfway.
So, the mic's still on, so I might just say, part of that, I know that we had a presentation from Safety Committee, from our safety folks two weeks ago, right?
We have someone that worked in this district as a, as an in-classroom teacher, as an administrator, worked in safe schools. We have the capacity. I mean, pick, pick a priority. Pick a priority and we'll figure out how we get there. We just need support. We have someone who literally implemented safe schools programs, worked directly with Ray. Is that, is that the priority? We can work on it. Is it curriculum? We can do that. Like, literally pick. We have retooled with our body and we have the resources in terms of human resources. Where you guys say you don't, we do. We're breaking down the, the barriers that you guys say exist so that we can't get things done. So whatever it is, let's do it. You guys pick. Whatever it is, you guys have a collective conversation, whether it's you guys, staff, have a conversation, let us know what the priority is. We will hyper-focus on that and actually get something done. The ball is in you guys' court.
Thank you, Mr. Gladine. Item 9.7. Special education, CDE notification of continued non-compliance. Ms. Wright and Mr. Lenares?
Good evening, Board President Phillips, Board members. Superintendent Allen, my name is Yvonne Wright. And with me tonight, I have Giovanni Lenares, SELPA Director. And supporting tonight, Crystal Thomas, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education. Dr. Iris Taylor, who is consulting with our Special Education Department. And tonight, we are here to bring before you a matter of significant importance, the notification of continued non-compliance in our Special Education Department. It is critical that we discuss this matter openly and transparently with you tonight as we work together to ensure that every student in our district receives support and resources that they need to thrive. The notification of non-compliance in our Special Education Program is a matter that directly intersects with our guiding principle and our core value. It is our firm belief that all students, regardless of their individual needs or challenges, should be given equitable opportunities to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices with the widest array of options. Today, we must address this non-compliance issue with a commitment to ensuring equity and excellence in education for all. In your packet, you will see that we have prepared a page with a list of special education acronyms to ensure clarity in our presentation tonight. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Lenares.
Okay, good evening, everyone. First, to start off with, I just want to share that this is, this is tough for me. I think I've now had the opportunity to work for this district for just a little over three years. And I love what I do. I'm deeply committed to special education. And getting this letter, both Yvonne and Iris can vouch for the fact that, like, this broke me. Because I do see the importance of all of this and the amount of work that it takes to not only just be compliant, but have that compliance turn into impact for students. And what I'll do is kind of run you through what each of these things means and then be happy to share any insights as to what the connections are between the general compliance of these things and sort of the work that we engage in every day and the work that's connected to our academic office, our MTSS framework, our significant disproportionality and other things. So the first one is our CSACE Plan, our 2023 abbreviated CSACE Plan. So having been a district that has been in significant disproportionality for more than two years, we are in significant disproportionality. And with that, then, CDE introduced this here in abbreviated plan, which essentially means that if you're continuing the work that you've already identified you're doing, you can address that through an abbreviated plan. So we did, and we submitted an abbreviated plan on time to CDE. As you can imagine, SELPAs up and down the states who are identified as being significantly disproportionate all had the same deadline. And so it took months to get information back from CDE as to whether our plan was approved. Our plan was not initially approved. We had a few updates to make regarding specificity around our goal areas, specificity around our, our specific actions and how we plan to use some of the funds. So over time, I've been working with CDE to provide those updates and provide greater specificity, greater detail as to how we are using our funds, what agencies we're, we're contracting with, what are the specifics around our goals. And that plan has actually been approved now. The final piece of that is, is just to get Board Member Phillips's signature, as well as Superintendent Allen's signature on that final approved plan in order for it to be moved forward for implementation. The second one has to do with our previous SIGDIS Plan, which is connected to the expenditure reports. So this plan was initially approved back in May of 2023 by CDE. There were changes within CDE's requirements around how we identify demographic data for students, on which students were specifically using our CSACE Plan to help support. And so that change then led for, led CDE to disapprove our plan and ask for that update. So once we updated that information in the 2023 Plan, CDE agreed that essentially if we updated the 2022 Plan to essentially mimic that same demographic data, they would approve the 2022 Plan, which now they have, which means that then we can now submit the expenditure reports associated with that approved plan. So the next one is something called the Small Unit Compliance. So as a large urban district, we don't, we're not a small LEA, but some of our charter schools have been identified by CDE as being small LEAs, small districts in and of themselves, and those are our charter schools. And so in, this is a three-year monitoring cycle. And so in the first cycle, three of our charter schools were selected for small LEA monitoring. And they had to go through a three-step process, which is a policy and procedures review, an educational benefit review, and then a student record review. As you can see here, both the policies and procedures review and the ed benefit review were completed and approved within the timeline. The aspect that has not been completed is the specific student amendment IEPs to hold that would reflect that educational benefit review. There are specific items that they're looking for. For instance, if a student has been identified as having a struggle in math and that's identified on the presence levels page of that student's IEP, is that then there be a goal associated with math and then a service associated with math so you can connect the dots between the identified area of need, a support, and then a monitoring or a progress system. So that aspect is not done, and the SELPA is absorbing that task. And we will be completing all of those amendments for the 18 identified students by June 1 of 2024. And so now we get into the two major compliance complaints dating back to 2020, 2021. These date back to that based off of COVID. And that families submitted a CDE compliance complaint for the district's failure to conduct or complete special education assessments for students within the allotted timeline. So these two reports, corrective action 297 and, and 401, reflect both that situation twice because two different complaints were submitted along the same area. In each of those complaints, CDE provided the district with eight corrective actions. And of those eight corrective actions, seven of them have been completed and signed off by CDE. The remaining corrective action has to do with the actual implementation of compensatory education for the affected students. This is also something that, as a district, we've taken to a much larger level. Because we know that COVID affected students' learning throughout the entire district, we've actually reached out to all students within, that had been identified within that, that timeframe of March of 2020 to the end of the 2021, 2022 school year and have offered compensatory education in one of three different fashions. So the majority of our families have received the letter and the remaining families have been invited to participate in our ADR process to provide specific compensatory education opportunities for them. And then the last one is a compliance complaint from this year where the district failed to implement the settlement agreements. In fact, I just today participated with an outside agency to absorb this monitoring myself. So I participated in a training in which it was reviewed. That was the corrective action, which was to review what are the requirements for implementing a settlement agreement. And so with, after today, and have already submitted to CDE compliance on this item. So what is our status here?
So in conclusion, the notice of continued non-compliance underscores the urgency in which we must address the issues within our Special Education Program. It is imperative that we take immediate and decisive action to ensure that every student in Sac City Unified School District receives the support and resources that they need to succeed. Furthermore, with the California Department of Education intending to impose special conditions on our district's apportionment of funds, including the appointment of a technical assistant facilitator, we must demonstrate our commitment to prompt and, to prompt and comprehensive compliance with corrective actions. We'll work collaboratively to rectify these issues and uphold our commitment to providing equitable education for all students in Sacramento City Unified School District. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Any public comment?
We have none.
Dear colleagues. Mr. Caata?
I'm really glad I'm on this side of the table now and not over there because I'm not held to two minutes. Because I'm pissed off. I'm, I'm super pissed off. This letter, as a government bureaucrat myself, people in government don't write letters like this unless things are fucked up. And they are in our district, and they have been for way too long. I'll read a few sentences from this letter. "For a sustained period of time and across a range of adverse determinations in which the Sacramento City Unified School District has been found out of compliance with federal and state special education laws and regulation, Sac City has failed to meet the CDE compliance and improvement monitoring requirements associated with such findings. CDE has engaged in longstanding and sustained efforts to secure Sac City's compliance with corrective actions at Seth forth above." What follows that sentence is a list of, we sent X number of emails, we made these calls. When I see stuff like this, this reminds me of what it's like to be a parent in this district with a kid with special ed. I went from trusting the school district, hoping they would see my kid and get him the services they needed, to having to document stuff like this, to basically litigating this thing myself from my kitchen table. Because I couldn't trust a single goddamn word out of everyone's mouth about what they were doing for my son. If there was this 30-day timeline, I had to write it on my calendar because I know that 30 days is going to come and it wasn't going to be done. I had to follow up. 30 days is going to come, and it wasn't going to be done, and I had to follow up. This letter and CDE putting us on blast like this really speaks to the frustration that our families are going through. And I try not to use this word because I feel like I use it too much here from this dais, but this is completely unacceptable. We are failing these kids. You know, a lot of this is kind of the remnants of our failures during COVID. But I think our failure to address the needs of our special ed kids during COVID because we couldn't meet with them in person and whatnot, that was a symptom, that wasn't a one-off thing. That was just when it finally got so far too ahead that people took notice and started organizing and coordinating to write letters to CDE to say, hey, this needs to stop, we're tired of working with the people in the district. You know, it's almost every single board meeting, we have closed session where we're talking about making settlement offers, approving settlements that the district has entered into. And I will tell you, every single time we do that, I'm sick to my stomach. I am tired of writing checks to these families that have been pushed to the edge to have to sue us in almost all cases to get what they need, because they weren't getting it otherwise. I don't want to write these checks, not because I don't think these families need this money, but because every single check we're writing represents a failure, a kid completely left behind, and it represents probably 10 more kids whose families are just hoping that things get better. They don't have the time, they don't have the energy to fight that fight. You know, with all due respect to staff here, this presentation was not what it's about. This presentation was, hey, we've got, it's more paperwork. It's like, this is a checklist of things we have done wrong, and here's our status update. What I want here, when we get a letter like this with this severity from the agency that oversees us and tells us that we're out of compliance with federal and state laws, is a plan. Real updates, real plans of what we're going to do to completely change around our system. More of the same is not working. We can't keep working around the edges on this because clearly we're, are we making progress? Definitely, right? The progress is way, way, way too slow. We have to completely reimagine our approach to special ed kids. We need to embrace the back parallel settlement and really understand that we are particularly affecting some kids, and that's a big problem that we're not addressing, speaking to the previous presentation. You know, my son is turning 10 next week. He's been in the special ed program. We got him in as soon as he turned three, right? Of course, with a delay, so really he was three and a half. This last week, we had an IEP meeting, and for the first time, I really felt like the IEP team saw my son and understood his needs. And part of that is because he's old enough that we have him in the meeting ourselves, and it's hard to bullshit us when the kid's sitting there. The other thing is, it's probably because I'm on the board. We had a solid team show up. I've been in IEPs where people are not prepared, and I think it's like I'm almost at a point where I'm not getting the experience that other families are getting, and I have to remind myself by seeing letters like this is not any better. It might be better for my kid, and I'm sure there are plenty of kids who it does get better, but there are many, 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 many more kids who it does not get better for. You know, I talked with the principal at one of our small charters that are, you know, the small LEA, like you said, and he said, what am I doing about this special ed? And I said, leave our SLPA. Get out of here. You owe it to your students to leave our SLPA. And to every single parent that comes to me, I say, you know what? Don't trust any one of this district to help your kid with special ed needs. Sue them immediately and fast, because that's the only way they're going to take you seriously. And I should not have to be saying that. And that should not be the answer in SAC City to get kids the services they need and are legally entitled to. Again, you know, I value the work that everyone is doing in this area, but it's not enough. And I don't know what we need to do. I don't know if we need to like roll some heads. What is happening that we're just not facing this? That's a rhetorical question, but, you know, I really would like, like, really bring us as a board, I think, and this is my request, but, like, come with humility and tell us what the problems are and what some possible solutions are, and really get our input, and get the input from the community, because it's happening behind closed doors upstairs here, and it's not, it's not working.
Okay. Agree, this letter is beyond heartbreaking to read. It makes me very ill. These are students, these are children, and we've been hearing these stories for far too long. Our job is to serve our students and our families, and they have not been served. So Taylor, thank you for your comments. So I'm just going to jump to a few things here. You know, this lies on us and the dais. This is our, this is our problem, but here's what I need from you guys. I need you to be honest, similar thing. You tell me, what is it, what are the problems that you're seeing? What, what's, what is it that we're having the problem with? Be honest, because we need to hear this. And if we have to agendize this every month, and I need a report back, we need a report back, because this is, I mean, this letter, what do we, how do we, how are we going to tackle those conditions? It's, I'm really at a loss, and I mean, I know you guys are doing everything, but this is like, this is a stain on our district for our students, and I'm really concerned about that. So tell me, what can we do differently? What is, what is the plan? What are you seeing, the problems? We have to know so we can do something different.
That's, that's a loaded question. There's a, there's a lot. I think there's, there are aspects of it that comes to training. How are we preparing our teachers to, to hold IEPs, to run IEPs, to, to do the technical aspects of, of an IEP so it is legally compliant, but also being very forthright and honest about what does progress look like, right? What is the access to general education curriculum that we provide to every single student in our system? And then what are the supports and services that we're providing to make more access available to those students in special education? One thing that, that happens from time to time is that we focus on placements of students as opposed to supports and services for students. And sort of rectifying that or, or addressing that comes with time and training, and that is something that, as an organization, we don't have very much of when it comes to designate a time for our special educators to have those conversations in small groups, so that it isn't just a, hey, thanks for the 45 slides on how to write a legally compliant IEP, but rather, how do I actually implement and put forth a legally compliant IEP? I, I have the opportunity to work with teachers that that's what they want. 15 minutes that I get an opportunity to talk to them about, they're like, this is amazing, this is great, but we don't have that very often. And so then that-
Why is it that they, they don't have that? Is it professional development? Like, what is the reason that that is not being offered?
I, I would say professional development is-
That we're not getting professional development out to teachers regarding this? That's, that's what you see?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I need to hear. I just need to hear, bottom line, what's not working, and we need to have a conversation continuing about what we're going to do different.
I, I do, I, I do want to just make, just address the fact that like, I think that, that as a board, you guys, you guys have made some significant headway. I've shared this with you guys in closed session around things like compensation. I do see our vacancies going down. I do see more staff wanting to be a part of our system. That's, that's definitely helpful. But now, now working with staff to then say, here's how to write not only a legally compliant IEP, but one that's driven by best practices, is something then that needs to be addressed further through negotiations and professional learning and things like that. We have to take our, the next step of not just the resources, but the time and effort to equip those resources in order for them to implement something that we, that we see beyond a compliance standpoint.
We can always chat about any other things in the future, because I'm sure there's a lot more to this. So I'm asking that this be brought back to us. I don't know if this can be done monthly, but we need to keep this in the forefront of our scope, because, yeah, we have to see what we can do to help correct these issues and what we can do as a board to support the team, so.
I'd just like to add that the special education department, the team, will be working on this issue on a regular basis. We will be working as a team to be, to get to the root causes of a lot of the issues and concerns, and then putting together a plan to address the, the problems that we are facing and the challenges that we're facing. And we will be able to report back to the board and to be able to inform you of how we're addressing these issues.
Okay. And I mean, I know you're, you're all a very talented team, so I know that we can do it. I just, what can we do to support you? And you let us know what problems you see and what kind of solutions we can provide and move forward with.
Mr. Singh.
All right. I appreciate the, the passion that Member Caata has brought, and I understand that you bring a very personal lens to it, so I know that's not easy to sit up here and say. I think, I think what I want to talk about is just two, three quick things. I think, first of all, realize that we, as a board, do not oversee you. We've talked about this. But we do field emails. We do field phone calls. We field a lot. We have no way of explaining, and you know we're going to get emails, of explaining why we have 40 emails, 22 direct phone calls that have gone unanswered or unreported, failing to comply with the requirements as far back as April of 2021. At the end of the day, even if we weren't here at that time, we are, we're responsible, right? I think, I think the, the anger and disdain you're hearing up here is a responsibility, right? We, we have a responsibility because we're elected officials, so the community's going to hold us responsible. I think one of the things is, I would like to have heard why we did not respond to 40 emails and 22 phone calls, and if that's the case, what do we need to do? Do you need more staffing? What is the reason? Like this, I'll just say, any professional setting, you have like a requirement to get back to someone within a certain timeframe, right? These folks are now going to hold, withhold some level of funding from us, so that we have to now fund a facilitator through our own money. And you can imagine how bad that looks considering how hard we've all worked to balance our budget and get our, our district back into the green. And I think we, as a district, get targeted way too much, especially when it comes to our finances. So this is, this is a tough one to swallow. Like, we worked really hard to get the county office of education to stop sitting in our rooms, and now we're going to have another person supporting us, but they're not going to support us by answering our phone calls or returning our emails, right? They're going to try to figure out what happened and come up with a plan to fix this moving forward. So I think what I'm just asking you all is, is to talk to your team and figure out why it happened, but also, you know, we shouldn't be getting reports like this. This is, this goes back four years of, of issues of noncompliance. So to really like, ask yourself why we have 40 emails and 22 direct phone calls. It's very, it's a very specific thing to get an email. And it's just really unfortunate to read, because it, it shows poorly on the district, it shows poorly on our, on, on staff and on our leadership. And I think we've worked really hard to get, all of us have worked really hard to move our district in a different direction, and this is not the type of letter that, that showcases what we've really done in the last couple of months, in the last couple of years.
Ms. Dean.
I, I feel like so often our conversations are like playing defense. We're responding to the issues, we're responding to things that have been years in the making. And I don't, there, there are pockets of like, we're on offense in these areas, but there, I would love to hear more about like, what are we proactively doing right now? How are we proactively changing what we're doing? I, I also don't feel like I have a grasp of our SPED program comprehensively, from, you know, the experience of families on school sites, the, the supports and expectations of our special education staff, teachers and aides and, and other folks on school sites, and then, of course, the, like, the co-teaching programs and the various things that bring in other staff. Because the truth is, SPED students don't, they are, they are part of the entire system and the entire program, they are not separate. So everybody needs to be a part of this system for it to be effective. How are our counselors getting support? How are our school psychologists and school social workers and, and just all these different layers that come into this? And then what is the, the process of communication from the school sites into the district office? And, and what's the system of, like, I'm very unclear about all of that. And so if we are looking at doing like multiple presentations coming up, just being able to kind of wrap our heads around what the system looks like, what parts of it seem to be working, what parts of it are so, I think, just consumed with the, the defense approach that we're not even able to get to the offense and, and, and respond in the way I think we all want to. So that would be like my request in, in moving forward in presentations, hearing more about the, the whole, the whole package of it all.
So I'm going to bring it back to a public comment that we got earlier from Justine Chu-Griffith, who commented on the current state of the special ed departments at multiple school sites, her own personal experience with her brother, and she is watching from home right now, and I would like to give word of something that she said, that she texted me. Students don't get what they need unless there's a ton of parent pushes and engagement, and this leads to students with busy parents, often low income or non-native English speakers, being most undersourced in special ed. So you said that a major issue is the trainings. Am I correct? Can you expand on that, please?
Sure. Any particular just aspect of it or just overall?
What?
Just, just-
Yeah, expand, please.
So, so, so training, yeah. So then, in special education, there's, there's a number of different sort of mandates that, that have to happen in order for you to, for us to write a legally compliant IEP. So that, that's a lot of technical work. But then there's also soft skills that come along with that, right? How do you set up the room? How do you engage with families? How do you notify families? How do you, how do you engage in the conversations so that families feel as though they're, they're a part of the development of that student's IEP, so that they feel that they're involved and that you see your student, as opposed to, here, here's, here's the percentage, here's the scores, here's the output, so based off of that, there's a processing disorder, so here are the goals, and we offer everyone 30 minutes a day for four days a week, so here you go, sort of thing. That's, that, that aspect of it starts, it seems very technical and very cookie cutter for any student, so when it starts to lose the individualized portion of it. So when you need training, then you need training on how to balance those two things out, right? How do you, how do you, to take those scores, to identify, is there a processing disorder, but also then communicate that to then say, what is that looking like in a classroom, right? What, hey, general education teacher, when you see this student engaging in this piece, what does that look like, right? So then you develop a goal that's specific to what that student is engaging in, then you make recommendations on what that student needs in terms of services. That takes time and coaching beyond just, here are the checkboxes to fill out, and here's how to interpret scores. That aspect is the next level of training that's needed, so that then families feel as though, when they're a part of that IEP, you're seeing my student, I don't have to feel as though I need to, you know, be on you about how is my student doing.
Right. So considering all that was just said, and the lack of that being given to staff on campuses, I'd like to bring back and mention something that was said in the 2022 to 2023 cohort for the Student Advisory Council, which was brought to the Board of Education in our 504 IEP Concerns and Recommendations. This was not an official resolution, this was recommendations. We specifically mentioned how often students who do have these plans are not being served inside their classrooms. And again, I would like to go back to what Justine Chu-Griffith commented on, she mentioned this as well, that there has been significant issues of 504 plans and IEP plans being ignored in classroom settings. In our recommendations, we specifically stated required training courses for staff in order to understand how to properly accommodate students within their classes who have a plan. These courses and trainings, these are recommendations that we have given, and we've seen no progress whatsoever. Our voices are being uplifted, and it's said that we're being uplifted, but when we state these, these things, and you're coming back a year later and we're still having these issues, it makes us feel like we are not being listened to. This has been a continued issue. We've seen no progress. I'm a student with a 504 plan, I've seen no progress. My friends with 504 plans, they've seen no progress. This needs to be addressed actively. It's been a year. It's been more than a year. I'm sure that this has been brought to multiple people's attention over the course of many years. So where's the accountability?
Being honest with you, this is, this is a really heavy conversation. And I want to make sure that we are not attacking our staff. And I know we have reasons as to why we want to cut at them with our disappointment, and I totally understand. But like, there's a lot for you guys to take back. And obviously, you're going to have to be looking at it and coming back at some point. But I, people have to do their jobs, too. And sometimes their jobs are really hard to do. So I'm not, like I said, I'm not discounting that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that the conversations that we need to have about the failure of this board perhaps to be able to, to put policies in place or maybe find ways for us to look into how this can be improved. I mean, if we're going to take responsibility for some of this, that's fine. But we're not chewing on each other. We probably should be chewing on each other instead of chewing at the people on this side. If we're going to chew on them, we chew on each other. I'm just going to be honest about that. But I, I, I do understand. But I have something else I want to say to that, but I'm, I'm going to let Mr. Singh speak first. Just be gentle. Can we do that?
I'm pretty gentle. I just want to address what Member Segura said. I think, I think all of us in that collective sense can, I think that's, that's pretty glaring. If there is a recommendation put forth by the student body, even though it's not an official resolution, I think I, I can speak for any adult in the room that, you know, there, there's an apology in order, right? This is a glaring, obvious issue that we have adults, all of us are adults, who have to find solutions for, 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 for the youth. And you've asked us for something, and it hasn't been addressed. And this is our time to start taking your recommendations and other conversations much more seriously. And I just want to, I think, thank you also for the fact that since we've called you and since you've been on this board, you have, your, your folks have showed up. The student body does show up now. You do come here. And I think it's on us to start taking it a little bit more seriously. I'm not saying we don't. But that's, that's a missed opportunity, right? So I just want to thank you for bringing that up. And I, I think your, your friend who came earlier spoke to this, so this is, this is a heavy subject. And at the same time, I'm not here to berate anyone or beat anybody down. I think what I'm really trying to say is like, we have responsibilities. You have a responsibility as staff that we don't oversee you. And I said this before, but we have a responsibility as, as community leaders to, to be angry, right? We are elected, so we, I'm assuming that the folks who elected us would be saying a lot less nice things up here if they had the opportunity. So it's just a moment for introspection, but also again, it's not simple introspection. It's what I stated earlier. We are, this is hitting our budget, and that hurts. And that hurts because we have a, a uphill battle when it comes to public image and other things. So whatever it is, we just want to hear those reports and figure out how, how this is going to get amended and fixed moving forward. And if that means agendizing it, if that means what Member Jean said is like, you're bringing some solutions, then you bring those. Because I can guarantee that it's not going to be only us listening now. It's going to be all these students, especially the ones who are bravely stating that they themselves have IEPs and 504s. That's not something anybody has to disclose, but folks are choosing to disclose that because they don't feel like they're getting what they need. And that should be a wake-up call for us.
Thanks. Okay, so we keep talking about what the problem is. And I know Mr. Gladney and the B-triple A-B was here. And we're talking about special, students receiving special education services. We've got 5,000 or so students in our district with receiving services. A thousand of those students are Black students. And we're looking at, I don't know the percentages, 18% or something, of Black students receiving special education services here. And we already know that the elephant in the room is the systemic racism that drives our education system. And no amount of training in how to create an IEP or how to, you know, make it, make it flow is going to stop somebody from funneling a child into special education because they're ignoring their trauma or their socioeconomic status or their race. So we got children who are showing up in special ed who we should have been taking care of differently. Those are children sitting there, it's like, what the heck are we supposed to do with these kids? We didn't work on what they really needed when they did. Now their learning is, is suffering, and now they're special ed kids, which doesn't make sense at all. So we've already been sued, right? The Black Parallel School Board came in and said there was an issue, right? Are we, are we trying to really activate some of this stuff? Like, I'm just sitting here reading this, and I'm like, again, these uncomfortable conversations. It's not just, we got a problem and we're not helping these special education students. For one, we need to find ways to not get 8 million kids into our special education programs because we need to take care of them better. But it's, it's a failure, again, to recognize that there are Black students at, at the top of the problem. So like, the more I think about it, 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 like, we have to uplift those who are hidden. And again, like, like I said earlier, it's kind of like, you know, you have to be reactive. Because CDE is like, here's a letter, and holy mackerel, right? At the same time, it's like trying to get someone to understand that we can't change the, 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 the results until we actually recognize what the problem is, which is again, not uplifting the education and the treatment and well-being of Black students in this district. And like, you guys can come back with new reports every month. But again, if we're not as, you know, as, as a, as an entire unit looking at the actual children in our special education programs. I just don't think it's the numbers. I don't think it's the data. I mean, I get it, yeah, you got to answer the phone from time to time, and I answered at work a lot. But this is major, and I understand that. But I do think that there's, there's got to be a focus. The students speaking are usually, just like Member Singh said, they're the, they're the voices. They are there, they are affected by it every day. And, and I've noticed when we do our, you know, I don't even know what they're called, when we, we send out settlements for parents. Those are not normally the parents who look like me. We're not really serving the, the, the quiet parents or the, the super-working parents. Like, maybe it's one mom and five kids and three jobs. So like, I, I just, I feel like we're again, missing the point. And I'm not even talking to y'all, I'm kind of talking to my colleagues because I really want us to understand that if we continue to talk about fixing a problem without actually describing or defining what and who is affected by this problem, we're going to keep getting letters, and we're going to keep finding it difficult to change something when there's a system that is not working properly. Now, granted, this particular district, if we're going to make these changes, they are monumental. They are revolutionary, but that is us taking on systemic racism in America. Like, and it's a fight that needs to be had. But, you know, as a parent of a special education student, I knew I was left out anyway. I knew that I had to do the extra stuff during the summer, and I need to pick my kid up myself. I knew I wasn't going to get that, but it wasn't because somebody was being cruel in not paying attention to him because it was too much work. It was just because he was invisible in the system. So like, while I understand, this, this letter should be sent to every single school district in America. And if they're doing okay, good for them, but they still need to recognize that the problems we're working on are not touching on the actual problem. So, you know, I get emails, and I'm like, good, good, fantastic. But I, I really think that, again, the training, we may have teachers who don't even respect the fact that there might be a Black kid in their classroom who has trauma. Jimmy's acting crazy, we're going to send him to emotionally disturbed over, we're going to, you know what I'm saying? There's this funneling and shuffling and moving kids out of the regular education, you know, arena that's, that's causing them to, to fall behind. It's almost as if you have too many kids in special education programs to be able to manage. So why are they all in there? And why aren't we taking care of them the way we should? So, you know, I, I understand, this is going to be a work in progress. But my question to you is, some of the things that we have in this settlement for the Black Parallel School Board, I mean, is, are there things within that that you would be able to utilize that would help you, you know, remedy some of these issues? I know we're behind, and I, I mean, I get that, but like, what, what is that? Are we applying anything that we settled for?
I would like to address one of the things that you said. And you asked about what are some of the things that we are doing? And one of the things that you bring, one of the points that you raised is really, I think, is an important point. And that is, how are we looking at some of these issues? Or what is one of the root causes of the problem? And it's not just, it's not just a special education issue. It is a general education issue as well. And so when we think about, one of the issues that was raised in the Black Parallel School Board settlement is we have a problem with how do we, our pre-referral process? The over-identification of students in special education? And how does that, that problem begin? And so we rush to identify students before we begin to say, how do we support children? Before they begin, before we begin that identification process? So we, we have begun to look at, what is that multi-tiered system of supports? So that we begin to provide the support for children before they, we identify? So that we give them the support as early as possible so that they begin to respond to that support? And we keep them in that tier one in, in our universal, in a universal instruction? So that's one of the ways that we begin to respond to the needs of children before we rush to identify them for special education services.
So I, I would just add, there are, there are a number of things in the proposed action plan. So the, the process right now is, our independent monitor that we've selected, that we're working with Black Parallel School Board on, has drafted a draft action plan. And we're working towards a final action plan. And then that'll have a number of activities in it that will definitely address exactly what you're both talking about in terms of the pre-referral pieces, things within special education. We were just having a conversation around that lack of a, a consistent pre-referral system across our system. If you go to elementary school A, you may get, you know, 12 weeks of intervention before being considered for an SST to look at a possible referral for special education. At school B, it may be four weeks. You, and then, but at the same time, even through the Black Parallel School Board litigation, there was a short-term measure that was put in place in 2020 that says we are going to honor any parental requests for an initial assessment. And so it, it, it sort of at times seems counterproductive, right? We're, we're trying to implement and develop systems to identify who are the right kids that need to be in special education. But we also have a directive out that says, if you ask for an assessment, we will do an assessment. And then how does then staff try to balance those two things out, right? If you have a school psychologist who's trying to be supportive of their school site and trying to balance out, hey, I can help you here, but now I have 15 requests for assessments. My time's taken up by that. And so suddenly then, we're looking at, okay, well, we need to now support kids. And so there may be then an over-identification of kids because we think that special education is a problem-solving tool to provide interventions, right? And if you're at that school site that doesn't have a robust system of interventions, suddenly special education becomes to look like the answer for interventions. So it is, it is a very, very convoluted problem to, to Member Segura in terms of the accountability measure. That's a very tough question to answer, but I, I would say that one of the things that I know that we've been having lots of discussion around through this, through this letter, through BPSB, through SIGUS, is that that accountability measure is something that has to live throughout the entire academic office and not just within the special education department itself. Because frankly, when, when we receive letters around annual determination pieces, those are things that are symptoms of things that start off when we're saying that this board has passed a resolution on that we want to build inclusive learning environments for students. So if there's a, a desire to build inclusivity in general education, then that accountability system also has to include general education as well. So it, it's not a direct answer, but it, it is a, the entire academic office is, in my opinion, the accountability system to address this letter and all of the things associated with BPSB and SIGUS and all of that.
Right. And, and so like, in asking for a review or for you guys to come back and update us, it'd be, it'd be great if it was the entire system updating how those changes are taking place. Because right now, it just seems like you guys are kind of getting the CDE middle finger, and I don't think that's fair, especially if it's the entire system. So.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. I, I got you. So it's a lot. So I don't see any more of my colleagues with anything else they would like to share this evening? All right. Thank you. We're gonna, this was a information item. Y'all know. I feel like we should be voting on something right now. No, we're not. Tom, 10.0. We're at public hearing time. 10.1, public hearing. These are the AB 1200s. This, a public disclosure and approval of MOU between SUSD and Teamsters, TCS. Flora Jors.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Janay Marking, our Chief Business and Operations Officer. And I'm Consey McCarron, your Chief Human Resource Officer, here to talk to you about a few items. The first is the AB 1200 disclosure between the district and TCS, which are Teamsters' classified supervisors. So it includes employees' maintenance operations as well as nutrition services and transportation. So as we go through, we will talk about the key highlights of the agreement reached and end with some fiscal information related to the agreement. Here you see your negotiations team. This presentation will highlight the highlights of the agreement. Article six, compensation for current school year and next. Article 11, vacations, some longevity incentive adjustments, and early opening impact days and classification and compensation study. So this agreement with TCS is a three-year agreement, except for the reopeners, as noted in the attachment. First, the compensation component is 4% across the board, retroactive to July 1/23 for TCS members with a 2% for the 24, 25 school year. Additionally, currently, TCS members are able to carry over a certain amount of time in vacation from year to year, and even more after they have been with district service for five years. Both of those amounts were increased five days. So from carrying over 12 to 17, and from carrying over 14 to 19. Additionally, the longevity incentive adjustments were made so that what you see on the screen before you is in the agreement in terms of the new longevity percentages for this group and the years of service that accompany it. The early opening impact days are related to the SBE waiver. It says, if approved, we know that it was approved. And so now adding eight days to the 10-month employee calendar. And for those that are 12-month, the district will, or they will receive an additional early, early opening impact days for both school years in which they can use with prior approval during the coast, the space of those two school years. TCS also agrees to withdraw the classification and compensation study that they previously agreed to a number of years ago with the district. And I'll turn it over to Janay.
Thank you, Consey. So the reported fiscal impact is estimated cost of $139,000 for a current year and an ongoing cost of $208,000 for all funds. Finally, a look at the multi-year projection. You'll see the same multi-year projection for all three presentations tonight to show you the total overall impact. You see there that we have ongoing discussion, which will be addressed in our upcoming budget conversation on June 6th regarding that third year out and just our overall spending patterns. But this information was supplied to County Office for AB 1200 requirements, and we are here for approval this evening.
Thank you. Fellow comment?
We have none.
Colleagues? Colleagues? Anyone would like to? Ms. Jean, go ahead.
I'll just say thank you for all of your work and for the creative solution of the early impact days. And I will move this.
Second? Okay. Okay. Student preferential, please.
Aye. Member Kayada. Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Rose.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Don't sit down, right? Item 10.2. Same AB 1200s between SEUSD and Teamsters.
Janay and I are here, thank you, board members, to share the AB 1200 between the district and Teamsters. Again, we start with the negotiations team. And the negotiations team for Teamsters and TCS, on the Teamsters side, we would just say, both for Teamsters and TCS, we appreciate those negotiation teams, the members and the times that they put into it. Similarly, the compensation for 23, 24, 24, 25, the professional growth program, part of the contract, as lo, as well as longevity incentive adjustments, early opening impact days, staffing ratios, and again, the classification compensation study. The 4% salary increase retro to July 1, 2023, and 2% for the 24, 25 school year is part of this agreement. Additionally, adjustments to language in Article 17, which speaks to the professional growth program, increasing the rates for professional growth as employees earn it, can be seen on the screen, as well as in the agreement. There is also an update to the longevity incentive adjustments from 10 to 30 years with the percentages, it's actually the same as TCS that you have on your screen. Again, the SBE waiver is now approved from the State Board of Education. At the time we made this agreement, it wasn't. So now, Teamsters, which are our plant managers at our elementary, middle, and high schools, are all 12-month employees. So they will get early opening impact days, which will be eight days each year, to use throughout that time period with prior approval from their supervisor before doing so. In the fall of each year, the district will provide Teamsters with our anticipated operation staffing ratio for the upcoming school year, giving Teamsters an opportunity, 15 days to provide feedback and meet with the district as a knee on the staffing ratios if they'd like to. Additionally, Teamsters has withdrawn their request. It's more than a request, it was an agreement that was made between the district and Teamsters that the board approved. And they are withdrawing that request for a classification and compensation study.
Thank you, Consey. For this agreement with Teamsters, the current year estimated cost is $303,000, and the ongoing cost is approximately $455,000 for all funds. This is another look again at the same multi-year projection, and similarly, the AB 1200 statutory requirements were met for this agreement. We seek your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
We have none.
Colleagues? I almost wanna sing the song to Jeopardy, like waiting for you guys. No? Okay. So, thank you, Ms. Jean. Seconded? Thank you. Student preferential?
Aye.
Member Kayada. Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Rose.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Moving right along. Hi, ladies! Item 10.3. This is the AB 1200 for the MOU between SEUSD and UPE. All yours.
This is the last one like this for this evening. Consey McCarron, joined by Janay Marking. And this is the agreement we're seeking approval for between the district and UPE. The negotiations team, you can see different members of the negotiations team. And again, a thank you both to UPE, as well as the district's negotiations team for the time, energy, effort, and hard work that goes into reaching an agreement. We definitely appreciate everyone's time. There were some adjustments to Article 5, the evaluation of work performance, as well as Article 8, compensation for current school year and next year. Some summer school language, so we are no longer in a place where we have to negotiate every single year around the summer school recruitment and retention incentives, as well as small innovative high school support and collaborative coaching model. This, similar to the other two, is a three-year agreement, except for reopeners that are noted. In the evaluation of work performance, the parties agree basically to go in and revamp the evaluation tool for administrators. And realizing the importance of evaluation and evaluation tools, we have a deadline to complete the revisions with a work group from both parties, no later than September 1st, so that it can be implemented in the next school year. Salary and benefits, 4% across the board, retro to July 1, 2023, and 2% for this current school year. Additionally, given the approval of the SBE waiver, eight additional workdays will be added to each salary schedule. As you can see, the salary schedules that are listed up there, four of them, for our UPE-represented employees. And that will be in effect for 24, 25, and 25, 26. The, the agreement around summer school language is, as I said, to work to put something in place. And at this point, we are already there and should be able to share that with you soon, so that there is consistent language and timelines in the contract related to summer school. The recruitment and retention incentives for UPE are listed as followed, going from the 10th year of service to the 25th, at the percentages noted on the screen. For small innovative high school support, we understand that it's very tricky to staff those small innovative high schools. And so what we did agree to was to add additional FTE to each, and that we would meet with UPE to determine exactly what that looks like at those schools. Collaborative coaching model, the importance of coaching, mentoring, extremely important. And we have a number of administrators at different phases within their experience in the district. So this is a, a joint work group that actually has already begun meeting, working on that mission, scope, and elements of an effective coaching model. Again, work to be completed in just actually July 31st, so coming right up. And that work is well underway to be able to provide support, assistance, and coaching for our administrators. Janay?
Thank you, Consey. Finally, for this agreement, the current year estimated cost is approximately $995,000, or just a little over that. And for next year and ongoing, the estimated ongoing cost is 1.5 million for all funds. This is another look at the same multi-year projection. Again, we provided this information to the county office to meet all AB 1200 statutory requirements. And on this one, I will just say, you know, on behalf of the entire negotiations team, we are so grateful for Consey's leadership as our lead negotiator. She is incredible. And it is really her leadership and her positive spirit and commitment to just ongoing relationships that will serve the district well, that has gotten us to a place of all these agreements. So, thank you, Consey.
Teamwork, teamwork, lots of teamwork.
With that, we request your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
No public comment.
Dear colleagues? Ms. Jean?
I just wanna give a shout-out to the agreements here about the additional supports for administrators. We, we can talk a lot, as a teacher, how much our jobs have changed, but really, the administrator job has changed a lot, too. And the, what they're being asked to manage and handle and do is, is asks a lot of any one person. And so I'm very thankful that part of this, this plan was to think like forward-going, how do we support folks? How do we onboard folks? How do we expand and, and support their capacity? So I'm, I'm just really excited about this agreement. And yes, thank you all for all your hard work. And I'll move it unless there are other comments.
Mr. Singh?
I'll make it quick. No, no, no. You can still have that. I just wanted to do a collective for all three, all, almost all three, since we still have to do this. Just the fact that in order to make our schools work, we need this unison and relationship building with all our labor partners. So I'm just glad to have our lead negotiator do so much good work and get our, get our district back on track. And I, it's just been a pleasure to, to see it all work out. So, thank you, Consey, and your entire team.
Good teamwork. Thank you. Yes. Okay. Student preferential?
Aye.
Member Kayada. Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Rose.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're right.
11.0. Board workshop? So 11.1 is approval of Resolution 3412. Ms. Wright?
Good evening, once again. My name is Yvonne Wright, Chief Academic Officer. And this evening, I'm before you to present Resolution 3412, from Early Learning Care to approve the Resolution Number 3412. This resolution is simply authorizing execution of delegate agency SEUSD agreement from the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, known as SETA, operating the district's Head Start preschool and early Head Start programs. This resolution will authorize the district to execute the agreement between the district and SETA. And you have the floor.
Public comments, sir? Any public comment?
We have none.
Okay. Dear colleagues? All right. Student preferential?
Aye.
Member Kayada.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Rose.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Thank you. And then item 11.2. That's 23, 24 Annual LCSSP Grant Update for Student Attendance and Engagement in the Care Team. I love those shirts. Look, she cut the sleeves off hers. Love that! Yeah.
You brought some swag? There are some large, medium, extra-large?
We weren't gonna guess your sizes. You guys can pick out the sizes.
So you get to pick out what's...
They're all extra-small, they're baby tees. Okay. Hello, it's so late. I'm sorry that we're here this late. Good evening, Superintendent Allen. That's the first time I've said that. Board President Phillips and the remaining school board members. My name is Jennifer Crutchman. I am the Director of Student Attendance and Engagement. We are here tonight to give our annual LCSSP Grant Update. And Danielle is passing out some swag. We have our care bags and some t-shirts, and our new flyers for this year. So. So, next slide, please. I guess I'm the person I'm telling to do the next slide. Here's our standard core value and guiding principle. I won't read that, we're all very familiar with those. This is our revised attendance and engagement vision. I'll read the beginning. Driven by authentic relationships with students, consistent communication with families, and continuous collaboration with our community, the Care Team, connect, ask, relate, and engage, within Sac City's Student Attendance and Engagement Office, is deeply committed to reducing chronic absence, improving student attendance, and increasing engagement across all areas. Here's our glossary of acronyms, in case something isn't making sense for you. And then this slide, this slide really shows the impact of missing school. So we all talk about chronic absence, truancy. But if you look at this chart, and I've shared it just about every year at the board meeting, because it really makes sense, and it drives home that if we have a student who misses just two days a month because they're sick, right? Starting in kindergarten through their 12th grade year, if they miss just two times a month, every month, they will have missed a total of one year and three months of learning. So that's a lot of class time. That's a lot of missed math lessons. This really looks at it, and there's a lot of our kids right now. We're at a 30% chronic absence rate in the district. That's a lot of kids missing sometimes 40, 50 days a year. So we're talking they're missing five-plus years of learning. And now I'm going to turn it over to Sandra Laird, who is our Student Support and Family Specialist.
And I'd like to add, to piggyback on that comment, that if we have a student with an IEP who's in special education, and they're chronically absent, they're missing out on those supports and services that were promised to them. And that, that the parents signed for us to give, you know, to provide that support to their students, so. So what is chronic absence? Well, I wanna actually start you off with one of my favorite quotes regarding attendance. Attendance is the foundation for all learning. And if you think about it, has to do with a lot of different modalities of learning and many different subjects. But our focus here at the district and within our office is chronic absence. And I'd like to read you the definition of chronic absence. Chronic absence is missing so much school for any reason that a student is academically at risk. California defines it as missing 10% or more. And this is basically a combination of excused absences, unexcused absences, and suspensions. All totaling 10% or more anytime throughout the year means that the student is chronically absent and has missed learning time, supports, and even time to meet and greet with their classmates and teachers. Go ahead and do this one. Okay. So some interesting information regarding SEUSD and chronic absence from the California State Dashboard. Chronic absenteeism fell from 36.9% in '21, '22 to 29.2 in '22, '23. That's a decrease of 7.8 percentage points, the only area on the dashboard to show improvement this year. And because we are highlighting the LCSSP grant, I wanted to let you know that we owe our success entirely to this grant, which provides funds to local education agencies to support programs aimed at improving students' outcomes by reducing chronic absenteeism and truancy, and supporting students who are at risk of dropping out of school or are victims of crime. And this year, we're really happy to announce that as part of the LCSSP grant, we're also working with or in partnership with the FACE Department. And so with that, I'd like to pass it over to Andrea Torres to provide some, basically some insight on the foundational supports that are part of the grant.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. So I have the honor of sharing bar cohort seven and extending our focus site program. So our focus site program consists of two child welfare and attendance specialists partnering with two of our family partnership facilitators. As Sandra mentioned, we're collaborating with the FACE team to support our 10 elementary focus sites. I'm looking for the clicker. So our, thank you. Our focus site summer connection home visits last year looked like, we cross-referenced our 2022, 2023 attendance data with our 2023, 2024 enrollment data, and we generated a list of chronically absent students. And in the month of July, very hot, we went out and did summer home visits to all of those students. What we accomplished is, we built trust with their families, we formed relationships, and we bridged transparent communication between schools and our families. This year in 2024, our improved methods are going to be, we, our goal at the beginning is to set attendance meetings or set regular meetings with our focus site leaders and attendance staff. We wanna do some family orientations for all focus site new and transition students and parents. We're gonna send out some summer mailings to all focus site students on an ESP and a SARB contract to remind them of their agreements. And then in August, we want to do a FACE parent workshop to create goals and an intro program to maintain our families connected. Intensive support. So what this looks like is each child welfare... So what this looks like is each child welfare, child welfare and attendance specialist and a family partnership facilitator has five sites that they work physically at two, two times a month. The goal there is for them to create MTSS foundations with the principal. Support the absence process, support the clerks with the absence process and following all that it entails. We also offer, and will be offering, to pay attendance clerks extra hours to support their attendance work as the majority of our clerks are three and a half hours, especially at our elementary school sites. They also will support in Tier Three SARB cost referrals and all of what that entails. And then the FACE parent workshops and family engagement events will be having two of those a month. The goal and the focus is to increase parent involvement at our focus sites. And then we have our care website linked right there with all of this information as well. Our focus site data. So this slide shows our 10 focus sites and the pre-COVID numbers, which were looking pretty good. And then after COVID last year, our chronic absence rates were really high. And this year, as of May, they've decreased. But as you can see, we still have quite a bit of work to do. So that's our goal and our focus for this next year. And I'll turn it back to Sandra.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so part of what we're doing, how we're implementing MTSS through the grant is we have several events and programs in place. At the beginning of every school year, or at the beginning of the year, we've been reaching out to the community to invite them to a community engagement event in celebration of Attendance Awareness Month, which is in September. We had one this past year, September 2023, which was hugely successful. We had about 1,000 people show up. And we included entertainment, student family resources. We had community organizations participate. We had free food, free bike repair, free haircuts. We had information on attendance education. And there wasn't, we tried not to leave anyone without a craving, for example. Someone wanted a snow cone. We were only planning on X number. We, we said, yes, absolutely, we're gonna get you that snow cone. You needed some more meals for your family? Yes, let's go talk to the food truck vendors, we'll cover that. So it was very successful. We're really happy about how it turned out. And we're looking forward to doing it again in the next academic year. Another wonderful program that I have, the pleasure of saying that I am helping to coordinate and roll out is the Greatness Squad Program. And this program is in partnership with Reach One Alliance, which is Mr. Kevin Bracy and Susan. And it's a comprehensive targeted intervention program designed to identify issues of chronic absenteeism and to increase school engagement and motivation among minority boys. Specifically, and most importantly, with our Pacific Islander, Islander, excuse me, African-American boys and American Indian boys, all of whom are in fourth, fifth, and sixth. So when we select the students who participate in this program, it is specifically that group of boys who we've noticed are struggling to attend school regularly. And when they, when they connect with Coach Greatness and Coach Kindness, they learn living skills. They learn things like, let's give, let's give each other a handshake. Let's teach you how to tie a tie. Let's teach you why you matter. I mean, it is positive. It is it's, it's just wonderful, I can't speak enough about it. It started off as a Tier Two intervention. But now we incorporate Tier One components. There is a school-wide rally at the beginning where Mr. Bracy gets everyone excited about being kind and being motivated to go to school. There's also a rock and recess where he goes out and spins music. And he's always chanting, "You're great, you matter." And then it concludes with a school site dance, a glow party. As you can see, if you can see on your screens, the glow parties are fabulous. And therefore, the entire school community, parents, siblings, we provide snacks, we provide water, we provide glowware and fun and positivity. And our t-shirts happen to have one of those catchphrases.
I matter. I show up, I care.
I show up, I care. So. Okay. Next one. Another wonderful program that we have thanks to LCSSP is the partnership that we have for Everyday Labs. Is that dash, attendance dash, dashboard or data tool, Everyday Pro is brought to us by them. It provides that real-time data on attendance, chronic absenteeism, and just regular school attendance. They also are responsible for sending out those nudge letters that reach parents along with the supportive text, which behind, which, that's okay. Behind those texts are a group of people who, who are ready to receive calls and questions if they need support in English, Spanish, or whatever language the family prefers to communicate in. And as a result of the partnership with Everyday Labs, I'm happy to say that for 2324, we've seen improvement in attendance. 56% of our students have an improved attendance rate. 6,896 students' attendance rate improved after receiving that Everyday Chronic Absence Nudge Letter. And nearly 3 in 5 student attendance rate improved. Have any of you received those letters from your PG&E or SMUD? Okay, you get the picture, same idea. It's not just for attendance. So the funding and learning impact. Thanks to our partnership again, we are happy to say that 10,804 absences have been prevented. We have recouped 486, or we've prevented $486,180 in a funding loss. And we have recovered $3,889,440 minutes of instruction. Yes. So I'm gonna go ahead and give it to my director to wrap up for us.
If we stay on that same path, we should have recovered nearly $1 million in absences. So it's a wonderful partnership. So for next year, and I've already started thinking like it's next year, so forgive me, like the slideshow bounced back and forth. But we have really focused on including family and community empowerment. So that engagement with the whole family system. We will continue and have our FACE and A&E monthly meetings. So the focus sites, we chose those 10 focus sites because we wanted to start small and implement with fidelity and really serve the families and students that are in need. When we designed these programs, we did so using the data. We designed Greatness Squad specifically for our Black and Brown students who are not improving in their chronic absence rate despite seeing improvements across the board in all other ethnicities. So we know that we have not been serving our students well. And we want to do whatever it takes and design systems that work. And we have seen improvements. In fact, CDE did a case study on Greatness Squad last year because it was one of the few interventions designed specifically for that group of students. We will continue to partner with SCOWI on Attendance and Engagement Network meetings. We're one of the host districts. And I talked to you about that, but they'd like us to host a meeting next year. And then the new Tier Three SARB cost referrals. We're changing SARB from being punitive at all to a completely 100% case management system, so. That is it. This is our Care Team staff. We are growing. We have two positions that we'll be posting shortly. And this is just a lovely quote. And we did want to thank Lisa Allen, Superintendent Allen, for this year, we are official. We are officially an office in the district. We have a location code and everything. And so it's been fabulous. We feel like we matter and it's important to us. So thank you.
Thank you. So before I ask for public comment, we have to extend the time just a tad. So, dear colleagues, let's just go to 11 o'clock. Not like we're gonna go to 11 o'clock, but let's just do that. So, all in favor? Y'all good? I'm assuming that's an okay. No, right now, we usually are supposed to end at 10:30 and we're not done. So bef- Huh? No, I mean, right, our bylaws just say we have to, I'm just asking if you guys want to extend. Yes? We're not gonna stay till 11, I'm just gonna bet you. But I just want to make sure you guys know. Okay. Are we okay with extending?
Yes.
Okay. Public comment, sir?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Colleagues? Any sharing out, anything? Ms. Villa?
I will keep it short because I know everybody wants to go home. I just wanted to say I love the slide. Like, this is something you guys should be so proud of, those numbers. I mean, I know how hard you've been working. I've seen it for the last couple of years. But just to see the pre-COVID and the numbers now, that is huge. That really is a big impact, so.
Thank you.
Recognize that, see that. Keep, keep that up, really amazing work, guys.
Thank you. And Sandra, Ms. Segura? Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to highlight the same thing. I go to school, so I notice a lot of students do struggle with these truancy tendencies. We are, it's hard. It's hard to get there every day, especially when you don't have a ride to school if you have difficulties getting there in general. So seeing what you guys have been doing and the push to try to fix this issue and the actual numbers, I think that it's great that you've provided this here. It shows like actual evidence that things are getting better. And I think that that's amazing. I think, and I have noticed it at my own school. I've noticed, like, I've been showing up more too, I'll be honest. Last year was, junior year was a little rough. But like, I've been doing better and I've been noticing a lot more students are on the same pathway. And a lot of it is because of what you guys have been doing. And I'm so thankful for that, so thank you.
Well, and thank you, because exactly what you said. When students show up and other kids are there, they want to go to.
True. Thank you, Mr. Kayada?
So as the public has made us well aware, the school year is starting a little early next year and the following year. Are we able to do anything, especially around that, to make sure kids show up, you know, and especially kind of if people need to change their plans, that we're really letting them know how important it is to get their kids to school at the beginning of the year?
Yeah.
Part of what Everyday Labs provides for us is the letters that go out. First, for this year, they've been reminding students that it's time for their break, but to not forget that the time to come back is X day. So we're gonna be asking them to help us with the push for great attendance around that extended time that we're gonna be here this year. So they will bring them in and we'll ask them to include that in the Welcome Back Letter to remind, to have it sent out district-wide. And then we'll also have them included in the text that goes out to remind parents and families and students that our year is starting at a different time.
Thank you.
And messaging, yeah.
Yeah, the messaging and the summer connections that we talked about. That's why we've shifted our summer connection home visits to really prep for next year and the early start.
We've always folded in that message of when school starts in any communication that we've had with our families when we do outreach. If it's around the time that school's starting, you know, that summertime, summer outreach.
Thank you. Mr. Singh?
I just want to highlight, what was the squad called? What is it called?
Greatness Squad.
Right, the Greatness Squad. I just really appreciate the fact that we're able to, to call, you know, call to attention the fact that you're focusing on a specific set of students, that I'm sure you have used data to recognize that Pacific Islander, Black, and American Indian students, Native American students are the ones who are dealing with a lot of chronic absenteeism. I'm sure today's been a discussion around disaggregation, so next time, just provide a bit more disaggregated data so we can figure out, or we can also see how you came to those conclusions. But obviously, we trust that since you're implementing programs, you've seen the numbers. So just wanted to thank you for finding something that you can actually focus on. And hopefully, we'll see the results of that.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Thank you.
I have a little bit, I think I have the notes. Just like as a whole school, it's, or as district-wide, African-American students were chronically absent at a rate of 58% last year compared to the district at 30 point, or 35%. So it's significantly disproportionate. And Pacific Islander, we're speaking a lot about our Marshall East families, too.
Since you said it, and I'm still here. That pilot still takes three groups of minority students, right? And I think what I'm, I guess what I'm hearing is if that's the case, we're almost double the rate. Is have there been conversations or thoughts around doing something very specific just for Black students to, to address chronic absenteeism? I'm, I'm sure it's just as high for, it's very high for Native American students and for-
It's actually higher.
Okay, so, so.
There's just, just numbers-wise, we wouldn't be able to reach a full group at those school sites with just African-American students and meeting all of the requirements. And we choose the students. So we don't let the school sites have their bias or anything that goes into that.
Thank you.
Thanks. That was an information item. It was fabulous information, thank you. Okay, and we are moving on.
Thank you. Thank you for staying so late. Sorry.
Thank you for your support.
Item 12.0, we're at 12.1, Student Member Report, Ms. Segura.
Okay, so just in light of the public reaction to the extended school, the extended learning days for the 2023 to 2024 school year, I'd like to just have a general recommendation. A lot of students are not watching the board meetings and don't have a full understanding of why this is happening. They just saw an Instagram post that says like, this is when school starts next year. So that understanding is going past their heads and they're seeing a lot of reports out from news sites that sometimes sway a story a certain direction. So I'm just, for a general recommendation, it would be beneficial in, if you maybe put out some sort of statement in layman's terms, easily understandable about why this is happening, the reasoning's behind it. So they don't just think, well, why are we being punished for something that happened three years ago? Which has been an increased argument against the extension. So while a lot of people working within the district may understand the eight-day extension a lot better than the average person not within the district, it's difficult to directly understand those terms and the, like, the agreements and the direct laws that went into everything when you are not a part of that decision and you are not actively being informed of those things. Especially when it comes in terms of some complex law understanding and policy procedure. Some people, a lot of people are not practiced in that. So I'd appreciate, and I'm sure a lot of other people would appreciate, some sort of clarification as my peers have come to me with the concern. And I've explained it to the best of my ability. They have been more upset after the explanation about the fact that they didn't have a better explanation rather than the actual extension of the date. So I think that it would help. Yeah, that's where I'm at. If you want to discuss this further, I, my email is open? Yeah, thank you.
Next up, 12.2, President's Report. I will pass. 12.3, Information Sharing by My Colleagues. Mr. Kayada?
Just a few things. First, I'd like to say I had an amazing time this past weekend at Martin Luther King Junior Elementary, it is now just an elementary school. We installed a community garden, and I was proud to sponsor that with some of the board funds that we have available to us. It really will turn around that school. It's just, I'm really looking forward to seeing what all the kids are able to do with that. And thank you to all the parents who showed up out there. Also want to give a shout out to SEIU 10 to 1 for inviting me and my colleague here, who I left, to their educational summit two weeks ago, had a great time. We had a panel kind of talking about how board members and union members can work together to understand each other and to improve their school districts and their educational outcomes. And also got to meet a lot of people and, you know, really understand the folks we're working with better. And then on a final note, I just want to give a big shout out to several students from Pony Express's ACEs program who went to the Matthews Regionals this past week at the Golden One Center. Unfortunately, no one passed on to Nationals, but they did have a great time. I'll just name those students real quick, it's Ryan Seto, Amaya Williams, Isabella Way, Abasi Zayyar Kletor, Nelson Matthew Way, and Carson and Kylan Story. And a big shout out as well to Mr. Wakefield, the program director there through the center at Pony Express who put this program together for us, of course, in coordination with the NBA.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes?
Okay, I'll make this quick. This Saturday, Burbank High School has this Burbank Carnival bash from 10 to 5. So if you guys can make it out, it's put on by Brown issues. And then also, May 20th at 12 o'clock, me and Superintendent Allen will be going to visit our transportation services. And so if any board member also would like to join us, let us know. We'll be there at 12 o'clock, just talking with staff and just saying hello. Also, the rain, we got rained out for our last pancake breakfast. But on May the 25th, we are coming back for round two. And so to celebrate our families, and I invite all my colleagues to come out as well, it's gonna be a very good time, that's all I have.
Perfect, any of my other colleagues? Good. Did we miss a superintendent? Okay, and then item 13.0, our Dear Consent Agenda. Do we have any public comments, sir?
We do not.
Any discussion, y'all? Nope. Moved, seconded, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Roll call. Member Caillada?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Sam?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Perfect. All right, where am I at? 15.0, I'm gonna read this fast today, because this is time to go. June 6, 2024, 5:00 PM. And I forgot, 14.0, received all that information for Business and Financial, 14.1. June 6, 2024, 5 point, sorry, 5:00 PM. Ha, closed session, 6:30 open session, Serna Center. Address, 5735 47th Avenue, Community Room. June 20, 2024, 5:00 PM, closed session, 6:30 open session. Serna, 5735 47th Avenue. Item 16.0 adjournment? Motioned and seconded by me. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this ends our meeting this evening.